This October 4th, 2017 meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. There is one just reordering. Dr. Morris believes the superintendent's report fits better to come before the assistant superintendent's report. So with that change, I wonder if we have a motion to approve the agenda. Denise?
I motion to approve the agenda.
Moved by Denise is her second. Second by Brian. All in favor. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Okay, we'll move to a public comment. Just one caution. If anybody is speaking about the racial incident that occurred about a month ago, at the advice of the lawyer, our lawyer, we caution you not to name the individuals involved. You can name your own child, but you should not name the individuals involved to protect their confidentiality. Is that understood? Having said that, public comment?
Hi. Hi, I'm Erin Sharp from Durham, and I've got an eighth grader at the middle school and a fourth grader at the elementary school. And I rushed over here to make a public comment, so I'm feeling like a little bit nervous. So I wrote a letter to the editor that was published in The Fosters on Monday about the racial incidents in Durham. And I have to say, this has been a really, a few weeks of a lot of thinking on my part, which I'm guessing is true of everybody in the district. And I guess there's kind of two messages I'd like to get our community thinking about. And the first is development. You know, the child that has been talked about in the newspaper is a second grader, and I think we have to be really careful. And one of the reasons that I felt compelled to make this public comment is that I have a fourth grader who, literally the day before the racial incidents was put in The Fosters, I got a call from the principal of Mohairamit that he had gotten in an altercation with a neighbor on the bus and possibly called her a name related to the color of her skin. And when I got up the next morning and saw the newspaper, my heart sunk because my son has more African-American cousins, aunts, and uncles than he does white. And we are certainly a family who is very, we talk a lot about racial issues, and he may have said something. There wasn't any evidence of what was said. But I guess, you know, one of the things I thought about is, what if this was my kid? A second grader can say things, and we have to be really cautious about, I think, making it or calling it a racial incident when it's a second grader. So I guess that's the first thing that I'd like to say. And the second thing is that our community is really open and supportive, and I just hope that we approach this as a school board and as a school district in a really open way because, you know, nobody is, no child in our district can be a villain, especially not at the elementary school level. And I know that that family needs just as much support with their child. So that's what I'd like to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin.
Hi, I'm Karen Smith. I've lived in Durham and worked in Durham for about 10 years, but I've lived in New Market for the past year. But I'm here to also speak about the racial incident, even though my children are grown. But in thinking about how to help children after an incident like this, I think, I feel strongly, and you may agree, that people need to be connected to some kind of a community. And I realized I am a community for the family of the boy who made the comment. And I feel so strongly about it that I wanted to come here tonight and speak, not to make judgments, but to just tell you what I know and what I've seen. And that is, I've seen a family who's really provided consistent, loving structure and who have not only reiterated the values that we're talking about and celebrating diversity, but who live those values. I think of them as a force for good in the world, and I appreciate the previous speaker talking about needing to have a context. So it just felt important enough to me that I wanted to come and say this. My hope is that the response to the incident will be in proportion. No one wants to have no response, but an over-response can also be damaging. And there's things we may not know about the larger picture. So I'm hoping we can have two conversations, one about this incident, one about the larger issue of celebrating diversity, which is so important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Troop. I'm a resident of Lee. I have a 10th grader and a 6th grader boys. And I'm here to speak on both, although primarily not the busing situation, the busing situation and the time change impact on my high schooler. Both of these have been extremely negative. I am a huge proponent and lover of our school district. I've been involved in our school district heavily since my kids have been in the district. And I feel personally basically offended and my children disrespected at how quickly this was rushed into, this decision. I know districts that have spent two to three years, once it was voted in, to legisically and strategically plan the finances, the operational execution of it, and the impacts on a social matter on the families, and since this involved every single family in our district. I know having, I have spent the time to talk to a number of high school people, of high school aides, people that work in the high school. There are so many kids that this doesn't even touch in terms of any benefit. I can tell you that my student, who is a quick learner, he's a straight A student, he has no learning disability issues whatsoever, and he is up so late doing his homework because his practices end so much later. He still has to get up at 5:00 to finish his homework because his practices end so much later. The RTC kids don't benefit from sleeping in. Kids with morning practices don't benefit from sleeping in. The kids who go to Rochester don't benefit from sleeping in. Every student athlete that I have talked to, the children are impacted. My son isn't here. He wanted to speak to you because his quote was, "I need to be heard," because he's still at practice right now. Our family dinners have been decimated. My kid's bus route is 70 minutes long, and I live in Lee. My 4th, my 6th grader is getting home at like 4:20 from this. And I feel as if I'm an executive in a business, and if I had made a recommendation to my boss, and he took it to his board, and it was approved, and six months later, I couldn't execute it with a strategic plan, I would have been fired on the spot, rightly so. I don't dispute the science, but I do dispute at how this was handled and managed, and the fact that all the high schoolers that I know, the ones this was supposed to help, are struggling with this. There obviously are ones that are not. I know that there are children that benefit from sleeping later. I don't know one of them. And I have spent the time to ask my son to canvass his friends, to go to their parents, to talk with them, and find out, if this has to stick around, how is it going to be fixed? Because it is not servicing our student population. We have an athlete-student population. Whether people like it or not, like the society that it involves or not, that's the makeup of our school, primarily. There are kids that are in arts that have had to quit. My son is thinking of not trying out for basketball because he can't get his homework done next semester because he's doing what he's supposed to. He's dropping study hall, and he's taking an elective, which is an additional science. That's what we're supposed to do in high school. And I can't understand, and nobody has been able to explain it to me at a level that's acceptable, why this happened in six months, and why this happened so that kids are on buses for longer than most adults I know opt to commute. That, to me, is completely unacceptable. And my children are extremely upset about it, and that's the thing that's most unacceptable at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Barbara Mountain. I'm with Lee, New Hampshire, and I have two sophomores. And I also have a concern about the late start time, in particular with how much school is being missed for sports. I think sports are extremely important. It's not something I want my kids to give up. But at this point, they belong, they both do sports that involve daylight-out time, so you can't push it later. The golf team has to play when it's light out. So the golf team misses, at a minimum, two entire classes a week, and it's the same class because you don't rotate the schedule. See, I couldn't understand that, why you always have it A through G period and not switching it some days. So every single week, at a minimum, he's missing two classes in the same class. I don't know how that's acceptable. He recognized this before school started, and he proactively went to meet with his guidance counselor to ask to have his study hall be the last period of the day because he knew how much school he was going to miss, not just with golf, but also with ski team, another program that's going to be extremely impacted by the late start time. He was told that that was not a legitimate reason to move study hall for a sport, even though the reason was so he would miss less academics. So he was told he could switch classes. So he switched chemistry, so he wouldn't miss chemistry twice a week, to Spanish, which I don't understand why it was any more reasonable to miss Spanish twice a week at a minimum than chemistry. But he's doing it, and he hates it. He says, "I'm a burden for the classroom, I'm a burden for the teacher." So he's proactively trying to do anything he can to make it easier. And I just don't understand that. I think that at a minimum, a couple of things need to be thought of. If you're going to continue with a late program, you need to think about rotating the class schedule, so when kids get out at the end of the day, they're not always missing the same classes. And I also think you need to look at adjusting the rules about who takes study hall at the end of the day. They say every kid wants study hall at the end of the day. Well, maybe it's so they get out early. But if it's a kid who's doing a sport that you know is going to miss classes on a regular basis, then that should be taken into account. Because next year, he's thinking, maybe I can't play this sport that he absolutely loves, and honestly, would be enough for me to say, "We're going to take you out of the school district if that's your decision," because it's not okay. You should be able to be strong academically and care about your academics and be able to do a sport that you love, which is extremely important for a whole host of other reasons. So unless something's done, and I am going to also reiterate what Rebecca just said about the homework. I mean, the homework situation here at Oyster River is just insane, in my opinion. I have two sophomores. I had two freshmen last year. They had all the same classes with different teachers, and the experience, the amount of homework they had a night was three hours a night at a minimum. My daughter, on a Saturday, would sit down and do homework for seven hours before she'd be in a complete meltdown, and my husband and I were telling her, "Stop, stop, you can't keep doing this." The same thing has happened this year. They have so much homework that when they get home from their sports or whatever they want to do after school, they're either up until midnight, or they're setting their alarm at 5:00 a.m. And sometimes they're doing both. The level of tiredness that I'm seeing in the kids this year is so much more than I saw last year, and I thought last year was a problem. So just some things need to change because I think the kids are going to have a real hard time, and I see it already, balancing academics and extracurriculars, both of which serve a really important purpose in their development. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there public comment? Okay, we have the approval of the minutes. We have two non-public minutes, and we have one public minutes from September 13th. So maybe start with the public minutes. Could I have a motion to approve those? Denise?
Motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for September 13th.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Brian. Are there corrections? Kenny?
On page two, maybe halfway down where I'm talking, and totally want the part about recognizing Tom Newkirk, but Tom, you'll correct me. I think you've done more than two books, and I think we should recognize that you have done more than two books.
Okay.
So what is the right number there?
Depends on how you count them, so several.
So let's take second out and put many books.
Several, okay.
Or just published a new book or something.
Sure, that'd be fine.
That'd be good.
That'd be perfect.
Thank you.
Credit deserves where it should go.
Thank you.
Are there corrections? No? Here none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, student rep in favor. The minutes are approved. I wonder if we can approve the non-public both minutes as a joint motion. Denise?
I'd like to make a motion to approve both non-public meeting minutes for September 13th.
Moved by Denise is her second. Second by Brian. Corrections? All those in favor?
My name has an S at the end of it.
What?
My name, my last name has an S at the end of it. It's misspelled in both.
Oh. I don't do that.
Don't look at her. Okay, with that correction, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. Most of the non-public minutes are approved. Announcements, accommodations, and comments from the district?
So we're into our little different type of scenario where we're all going to be up at the same time to try to alleviate some of our walking back and forth.
Okay.
I'm Carrie Veech, principal at Mastway, and I just wanted to bring you up to speed with a few of the things we have going on in our school. This is our, we started a running club last spring. We have our second round with our fall running clubs, led by Kathy Baker. The club has probably doubled in size. Last spring, our goal was to run the bobcat bolt, or at least have the kids run the fun run. Most of our kids ran the 5K, even some of our kindergartners, which was great. So we're looking forward to the running club continuing this fall and again, hopefully in the spring. The second thing I want to bring up to everyone is that we had done a whole school project on this Only One U book as a focus, and we had a bunch of our teachers come together as a committee to focus a bunch of activities and lessons. And last Friday, each student in the school and each staff member in the school painted a fish, putting us all together as a school of one in a whole school-wide project. It was amazing. We buddied up kids, the younger kids with older kids, and it was just amazing to see that come together so well. So I'd like to thank all the teachers that worked on that project. I know both Todd and Dr. Morris were able to come over as well, which was great. I think it was at our last meeting, you mentioned our connection that we now have with Doris Demarest in the food department, the school nutrition department, I should say, with UNH. And our 4th graders are scheduled on the 25th of October to actually go tour the hydroponic gardens at UNH. So we are so thrilled about that. Hope to bring you some pictures from that experience. Our PTO has our Halloween social coming up on the 28th of October from 5:00 to 7:00 at Mastway. All welcome, in costume or not, it's always a fun event. And lastly, the staff really wanted me to share and put out a huge thank you to our PTO and for all of our both known and unknown donors to our playground project last year. The structures were installed this fall. They are amazing. The kids are loving them, and it's been another great staff support event where, I know I had mentioned Kathy Baker and a few of the, Catherine Moore, our school nurse, did some videos to show the kids the do's and the don'ts of the structure, because it looks a little intimidating at first, but really, it's going great. So thank you to everyone who helped make that come to fruition. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm David Goldsmith, the principal of Mohairamit. I want to start by just saying thank you to everyone in the whole community, the school board, and all the families, and everyone who's made the beginning of the year for us so smooth at Mohairamit and have welcomed me. I've just loved getting to know everybody in the community and the teachers and the students, talking to families. It's been, I think, a great, a great beginning for that. We have also a number of after-school activities that are going on, some that are run by Mohairamit and some that we host. We have huge numbers of students every day being dismissed to multiple places to go to all these activities. It's really exciting to see. We have Girls on the Run, Coyote Club. We have One World Language Beginning. We're hosting Seven Rivers paddling and mountain biking programs at our school. We have Chinese language classes happening through the Confucius Society. We have just a tremendous number of activities happening, which just shows you how curious and interested all of our students are with their learning. We are getting ready for our pumpkin stroll, which is happening on Thursday, the 19th, 5:30 to 7:30. We are going to be carving our pumpkins in school this year as a whole school community. We're really excited about that, and we'll have more information coming about that as we get closer. And we also want to, Carrie and I both want to just remind everyone that we have no school on Friday, so that we're having conferences at the elementary schools, and we're excited for teachers and parents to be able to get together and talk about their students. Thanks very much.
Thank you, David.
Jerry Shadler, principal at the middle school. This is an interesting, Linda Reeve just sent this to me four and a half hour ago. We had, in the New England Writing Awards, they were just announced today, all three winners were from Oyster River Middle School. And I was looking at, you know, Students won in the high school, all of them from Connecticut, Maine, et cetera, but all three winners in poetry, fiction and nonfiction. Abby Tran won for poetry from Oyster River Middle School, Roland Brown for fiction and nonfiction, Ella Giannino. So just really, really impressive stuff. I do want to say it's been a great start to the school year. We had a wonderful open house, which was extremely well-attended, a lot of happy parents, a lot of happy students. The building was a little warm. Someone had asked, "Jay, has the building always been this warm or hot days?" And I say, "Yep, since 1935." So a couple of new clubs, just to mention a few. We now have a golf club at the middle school. Mirza Bagnal, a parent volunteer. What we're doing is we're going up with a high school golf team so our kids can participate in golf club. That's something new. We're starting a mythology club with a teacher. You know, we have a large group of kids who want to hang out and write and talk about mythology, which is, I think, pretty cool. I did want to mention too, I know we made a change in our FCS program last year, and the focus of the FCS program is cooking. Doris Demarest has actually been coming over and using that space to teach a kid's kitchen safety, as well as, last week, they were making macaroni and cheese. So I did want to let the board know that. And lastly, I'd just like to end with this. I think this is a very positive reflection of you as a school board. When we did the new student orientation in August, I meet with all the parents. Now, we have approximately 40 new students to the school, and several parents approached me after my talk with them and said, "You know, Jay, the reason why we're here and moving into the district is because of the schools." And again, I just think that's a positive reflection of the great work that all of you do. Thank you.
Good evening. I would first like to talk, Hannah Jane is going to speak about students and what's been going on at the high school for the students, and I'd like to talk a little bit about what's going on for faculty and some of the things that we've been involved with. Open house was very successful. We had a large number of parents attend, and we had, I spoke to the families ahead of time about pathways and options for kids. So we talked about college and career readiness, a variety of different things going on in the high school that give students other options outside of the traditional four walls. Also, Teacher Workshop Day is coming up, and we have a lot of faculty working on competencies, and our PLCs are starting up, and we'll be looking at assessments, grading, and competencies as well. So we're all very excited for that work. I'd also like to point out, and I had this in my parent newsletter that I sent home, that at the Barrington Public Library, we'll be having an early college planning session at 6:00 p.m., and that is on the 25th of the month. And also, we have PSATs coming up, and that is during the school day for students, and that's on October 11th. And we ask families that are interested in having their juniors take the PSATs on the 11th, contact the counseling office before the 10th, so that we have numbers of students. Dr. Moyer, Judith Moyer, has been coming to the high school and working with faculty on mindfulness studies. She came and spoke to the entire faculty and staff during a faculty meeting one morning, and there was a lot of interest in having her return and work with faculty regarding mindfulness. And so she will be returning to work with small groups of faculty as well that are interested in exploring that. And I'd like to take this moment, just a few minutes of your time, to talk to you a little bit about where we are with our master schedule. So we've been working on the master schedule quite a bit all year last year and into this year, and over the summer, the master, the scheduling committee met to look at scheduling options. And we're looking at a variety of different things for the schedule, and I just want to talk to you a little bit about where we are in the, in the process to give you a little bit of feedback about that. So we've talked about the discussion, the discussion at Oyster River High School's been around mission, vision, core values. That's where it all started. We started that last year, really getting feedback from a lot of faculty about that. What do they, what do they feel are core values that we want to make sure that our schedule reflects? And we built from there. We examined our current schedule. We explored other high schools. There were visitations to high schools such as Hanover, Bedford, Portsmouth, Sauhegan, Boe, and Gorham. We also looked at a variety of different schedules that are out there, from schedules in New Hampshire all the way to schedules in Wisconsin, to get an idea of what's out there for high schools, what are high schools doing to help students balance the many interests that they have. So we are at a point now where we have done a lot of the research. We have surveyed faculty, we have surveyed students, we have invited students to what we call brown bag lunches, and faculty to talk about the schedule, to talk about their school day, their outside activities, their extracurricular activities, office hours, advisory, all of the different pieces, numbers of classes, length of classes, all of the different things that we would like information about in building a new master schedule. So we're at a point now where the scheduling committee is reflecting on all of that information and continuing that conversation, and they're looking to create possibilities for schedules for the future, for the master schedule for the future. And we'll be talking to faculty about a variety of possibilities, probably two or three options will be presented to the faculty in October, and then we will be coming to the board with information that we have discovered to have the conversation with you about options for the high school for master schedule.
Great. We'll look forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Announcements, accommodations, comments from the board? Brad?
Went to curriculum night at the Mastway when that happened, and another good turnout. But one of the things that really was great to see as a parent is the, kind of what happens behind the scenes with your students as far as, you know, where they're, why they're doing things the way they're doing things. And that really was enlightening for a parent because we just think they go to school and they do their math programs, they do their reading and everything else, and kind of see the reasoning why it all kind of plays into each other. But the important, I think the part that was really great was, was at the, at the second part of the night was, we sat with all the specialists, and we, it was small enough, we actually could do it with just a circle of chairs, and really could exchange a lot of ideas and see what was going on, and it really was a, really was great, really was great. And also, the high school open house, the band was outstanding. They really, I mean, considering we just started school, what, three weeks before that, they were really great. I enjoyed all the options that students had, especially with college credits and high school credits. I didn't have that option when I was in high school, so I think that's great. And, and the band really was, really, it was a nice start to the night. I got to tip my cap to that, so.
Thank you, Brad. Kenny?
I just want to thank people who came and spoke tonight, and thank people who write letters, because in a way, that's the way a school board can stay connected with the school, especially if we don't have students in the school district anymore or in a particular school. And it was something I was going to raise even before the public comments, is last year, when we did talk about the late start, one of the topics that we talked about that was very important to address was the homework load that our students are facing. And I was hoping that we can have an update at one of our next board meetings about what's going on with that assessment of homework in our district, and, and I think it's very important that we, as a board, feel that that process is addressing the issue in a fashion we approve of, look at that. Because I've had, heard from parents, community members, who that is such a pressing issue, and we tried to address the sleep issue, but as parents were pointing out tonight, if we're not addressing the homework issue, we're really, you know, we're in, we're still in the quicksand, and we're not making progress. So I think that's really important, and I think it was at the last board meeting or board meeting before, we really talked about how we're going to assess the impact on that late start time. And I think this is something very, very crucial, that we pay close attention to that, and that means bus rides, after-school activities, impact on family dinners, impact on just how long kids are on the bus. long kids are on the bus, and what that time involves. So I think we really need to keep paying attention to those issues.
Just a comment related to that, I believe, and maybe Todd, you can talk about this when you, when you give your report, because I think, I think that surveys, we're going to like hold off the homework survey until October, so I assume fairly soon that's going to be administered. And I've also asked the administration to look at schedules, because it seems to me homework is related to schedules. The number of courses students take, you know, obviously affects how much homework you're going to do and how few study halls you have. So that, we're going to get some information on that as well, because I think that's another piece of that puzzle. I'm sorry, go ahead Denise.
Oh, that's fine. I just want to echo what Brian said about the concert at the high school open house. It was wonderful, especially given that we were only a few weeks into the school year, and the band sounded great. I also want to say another big thank you to Doris Demarest for the community dinners that she puts on. I did attend the first one that I think was just this past week, and they'll be throughout the year, so I really encourage people to kind of keep a lookout for those. It's, it's really a nice way to both get to check out the food that the students get, to, the wonderful food, I should add, and also just a really nice community event. And I also want to mention the high school PTO, its first meeting was this last week, and for parents out there of high school students, really encourage you to come. It's not about, I think people have this mindset that PTO is just about fundraising, and particularly at the high school level, it's really about sharing information. And we had Heather McEnoff at this last school board meeting, and we had a very small turnout. It would be really nice to see a bigger turnout, because information is shared about what is going on in the schools, and there's sort of different topic for every month. And there's always an administrator at the high school PTO meetings as well, they give us like an administrator report. So it's, I think it's a very worthwhile use of time. I know everyone is really pressed, but, you know, just to kind of check that out, it's the third Thursday of each month. And then the last thing I just want to mention, and Dr. Morse may be planning on saying this, but part of our difficulty, I think, with our start time is that perfect storm of the buses and not having enough bus drivers. So part of the, you know, part of the dilemma for us is that we're still short bus drivers, which means we don't have the runs, are not the way that we had originally envisioned, because we are still short. And so, you know, that kind of complicates things. It's certainly something we need to continue to look at, but I think that's, you know, just one of those factors that as much as we really did try to consider a lot of different things and what would impact, you know, not knowing that we would be four bus drivers short at the beginning of the year, you know, it just wasn't unfortunately something that we could foresee. So thanks.
Thank you.
Heather?
So since we keep mentioning scheduling, I thought I, I wasn't going to bring this up, but I'll bring it up, because I was just looking at an email. One of the difficult things I think we found is that the school system, the town, the nonprofits, the university, they all have a schedule, there's literally no coordination between them. Everybody acts as a separate entity. And so I have a group of interns from the UNH entrepreneurship class, and that's what we've thrown out is our problem. How can we come up with a better avenue of a schedule that's sustainable, that we can run, that allows us to put, I'm not talking every event, but the major events from all of our organizations on like a Google Doc or something like that that we can administer, so we can plan out a year and look where everything is dropping. So we can stop stepping on our events, and that we can begin to support each other. I mean, there's a tremendous avenue of collaborating between all of those elements that will make the, the projects a lot better. And I think so, the hope is, I'll be coming back to you guys, Eva's toiling away with the technology today, that we can kind of figure out a way that we can administer it, pick the biggest events and kind of coordinate ahead. So that's, should be hopefully a good project.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd just like to mention that we're talking a lot about homework and how it's affecting
students, and we're sending out a lot of surveys, but students obviously are so stressed and have a lot of homework, which is the issue, that we aren't really motivated to take these surveys. I'm just going to put that out there. I know my advisory, when we take them, probably half the advisory takes them, even though we're all supposed to. But I think there's a lot of benefit to just going out there and talking to students, because I'm here, I'm on the board, I'm, have lots of homework, I have lots of stuff I need to do, I have after-school activities, I have all of that, and so I can be a great insight to the homework ordeal and taking lots of classes. And just nothing beats going out there and talking to students, or getting students to come and talk at meetings, to give you a perspective on what the homework situation is like, and students' ideas on how to fix them.
I wonder if it would be a good idea at some point to have a, a meeting with the student council, where we would meet with, because you know, those are representative of the entire student body, right?
Yeah.
That we would just meet and, and not have any kind of action we'd have to take, but to do something where we would just talk.
Yeah, I'm sure the Student Senate would love to do that. We meet every other Wednesday, so more than.
I was just going to say, I was holding off to ask to do that, because I just, Sunday, I met with the UNH Student Senate and got dropped on their agenda, and talked to them and reaching out with connections. And I thought it was, it is really good, because not only did we introduce ourselves, but then we've established a group that's working on us with other things that we need to accomplish. And I've sat here for five and a half years, and I've never been to a Student Senate meeting. So it'd be really interesting to go.
The Student Senate would love to have anyone.
Along that line, and I certainly don't mean to circumvent any sort of channels, direction, but I know many of us would sit in, in one of the sociology classes, and that would be like that once a year, twice a year, and we'd hear that input from just the students that were in that class. And it was always so informative for me. And I'm wondering if beyond that, if on some sort of schedule, and you know, not super frequent, but we just have like a afternoon or sometimes a morning, and we just say, hey, this is open time, you don't have to be in that one sociology class, that we can encourage that kind of dialogue. Because I think this is all about you guys, the board, the school is not about the school board, it's really not about the teachers and the administrators, it's all how we can best meet your all needs and provide the best education and growth that we can, and who better to inform us, so.
Yes, I've actually been, I was in one of the sociology classes that the board came in and talked to. You know, I think it was really beneficial for students to get their voice out there, but I do think personally it was a little more intense, because we were getting graded for our discussions, so it was a little hard to truly put what we are feeling out there.
Yeah, we get in a non-grading situation, you know. Michael, you?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. First, I'd like to recognize the, the courage of the student athletes from Trap Academy, who took action against discrimination and have received considerable amount of both local and national media attention. But I think that also raises the question of if we've given adequate thoughtful consideration to how we would respond to peaceful political action or demonstration by students in Oyster River. That's not the sort of thing you want to respond to on the fly. Secondly, I know from my experience prior to being on the school board, that the, the school board and the administration go out of their way to be responsive and transparent when they can. That said, I have seen and heard conversations about school issues in the community that I think would be more quickly addressed if members of the community knew where to go and how to contact members of the school board and the administration. A lot of this information is somewhere on the district website, but it's not necessarily intuitive if you don't know what to look for, or if you don't even necessarily think to look on the district website. And I've been, from my own perspective, I've been hesitant to engage in school-related discussions in social media or other, other forums sometimes, because of the, well, because of Right2Know, essentially. And I'd like to suggest that we think about providing a general statement about how to find school board information, school board meetings, how to navigate where, where particular information is found on the website, how to contact the right administrators or school board members, thinking about just a kind of a generic text paragraph that, that we could, we could agree to, that would be something that we could copy and paste into whatever appropriate forum where, where it could be useful.
So, so how would you, how would you see us proceeding then to, to develop that?
I'd be glad to take a crack at putting together something I would think would make sense based on my experience, and bring it back to, to the board for future consideration.
And is that, like, if you go to the district website, and you go through the headings, and one of the headings is school board, and then that breaks down, and it gives agendas, meetings, members, emails, right? Is that not adequate?
Well, so the information is there, but I still see conversations in the community or hear conversations, when is a school board meeting? Where is a school board meeting? How do I contact the superintendent? When is the next school board meeting? What's on the agenda? How do I find out what they talked about? It's all information that's there. It's all information that are questions that can be relatively easily answered, but for whatever reason, it's not being found. And I think that maybe, you know, there are a few community Facebook threads or groups that, that it might be appropriate to have access to it, potentially even things like PTO newsletters. You know, I see in, in the Mohairat PTO, or the Mohairat Principals Newsletter today, the school board meeting was on the, on the calendar in the little upcoming events block. I don't know how, how, how much attention that gets, but there's a, you know, it's another place for it to be more accessible.
Okay. So would you want to come up with something, just to see if, make it, make it more clear to people? Then you can bring it to the board, sure. Okay. Other comments? Okay. So now, because you shifted the orders, superintendent's report, so you, okay?
Thank you. So the first thing I wanted to bring your attention to is the enrollment. The enrollment in the district continues to climb, so our official October 1st enrollment dated October 2nd, because that's when it was due to the state. And just as a point of information, annually in October, this becomes the official enrollment data for the entire state of New Hampshire. This is, this is what we submitted to the state related to Oyster River. So we continue to grow. Our population on October 2nd was 2,148 students. I would also add that that does not include the PEP children, so there's another approximately 40 children that we educate that doesn't show up on this form, but shows up in a report that Catherine does to the state related to our preschool program. So that's great, that's wonderful, that's terrific. We continue to grow, and then you turn the page, and you look at what that growth means to a classroom teacher. And so, you know, the enrollment that we're looking at ideally, based on the class size policy, is 18 to 22, that's the board's recommended load. It's not an absolute, you know, clearly, because you can't deal in absolutes. However, when we start seeing enrollment above 22, we get concerned. And if you look at both of the elementary schools, side by side, you see that fourth grade, we have 23 and 24.
We didn't get those pages.
I'm sorry, it should have been in your packet.
Yeah, we only got, we got the, the official enrollment, but not the school breakdown.
Thank you. So the issue for us is our fourth grades are in the 23 and 24 range. And there's not a doggone thing we can do about it, because we have used up all the real estate in the schools. Our kindergarten enrollment continues to be higher at Mastway than Mohairat, and that was a switch that happened several years ago. So we're all curious as to whether that will happen again. So it's been three years, it surprised us when it happened. Three years is a definition of a trend, so we'll see if the fourth year continues. It does have implications for discussions during budget season that, you know, I won't share tonight, but we really do need to be paying attention to the impact of our growth as we have at the high school. So the high school has grown due to our tuition agreement with Barrington. We're seeing the elementary school, Mastway in particular, growing, even though Mohairat is, is, is becoming smaller. The issue that I would share with the board on Mohairat is, remember, five years ago, Mohairat was nearly 100 students over-enrolled. And so even at 345 students, it's slightly over-enrolled, based on capacity of the classrooms. So I just put that out there for food for thought for our budget season. The middle school numbers are really solid. We're at 660, oh, that's not right, I got to go to this form, sorry. We're at 660 students at the middle school officially, and 793 students at the high school. And I do think Suzanne owes me a lobster roll, because she said we were going to open at over 800, so.
Apple Crisp.
She doesn't remember it, unfortunately. But she did, she did pay up in terms of apple, apple crisp, so.
All this betting going, I don't know.
We, we are an adventurous group at times. So that's the enrollment. Any questions related to the enrollment? Great. So this, these numbers now will feed into the long-range planning committees, so they wait for these numbers so they can update their long-term projections. So this will get over to them, if it hasn't already. And then the next time they meet, they'll start incorporating this data into their projections, and they'll update theirs, and we'll get a report from that committee a little bit later in the year. So that, that is a, that's a major issue for us in terms of the good news that we continue to grow ever so slightly every single year, as opposed to becoming smaller. The bus issue. So we started the school year, as Denise alluded to, five drivers short. We have managed to hire another person, and they passed their exam, so now we're four drivers short. So the, the issue is, so, and we have two now who are expressing interest in being the, the drivers, two more drivers. So if they pass their exam, we'll be two drivers short, so we're making headway. Here's the problem, it takes upwards of two months for the state to go from the beginning of the process to the end of the process. And so somebody passes their written exam, it could be as much as a month before they get a driving test.
Wow.
So I got contacted by the press about this issue yesterday, and I guess they're doing a more global issue around the shortage of bus drivers, and they asked what could happen differently. And I think if the state would staff the division, they have one person, so every district in the state has a shortage of drivers, they're doing what we're doing, and so there's a backlog of people trying to get through a system where the bottleneck is one person, not that that one person isn't working hard, because they are, obviously, but it's not enough personnel to address the need across the state. And so one of the things that could happen is that the state double or even triple, even temporarily, the number of people who are certified to give those tests. So, you know, we're probably a month out from those two people getting on a bus. I would also say that Lisa and Todd have worked aggressively to cut down on driving time across the district, and at the next meeting, I will give you exactly how long it takes for every, every run across the district. When I say exactly, it's what the computer model shows, it's what the drivers are saying. So what complicates the issue? Downtown Durham complicates the issue. We're trying to get buses through downtown. When kids are moving from class to class, the buses have to get through that human traffic as well as car traffic in order to get over to Mastway. We have increased the buses to Mastway that are strictly elementary. So just this week, we created a seventh bus at Mastway that doesn't go to the high school. And the bottleneck for us largely is at, is in Lee. And it's the distance from the Mastway school to the high school that, that causes that. And then between that is the university. So we continue to work on that. I don't want anybody to think that this isn't an important issue. It's being worked on, on a daily, weekly basis, but ultimately, what we're pushing against is shortage of drivers. And so we can create the most efficient runs with the drivers we have, but until we have those positions filled, they're still not going to be where we want them to be.
Could I just ask a question about that? So my sense is that even if we hadn't changed start time, we would have, we would have this problem.
Absolutely. The, the time that kids are on the bus is directly related to the shortage of bus drivers.
Okay.
Could I just ask one other question? On the issue of the delays related to the state. On the issue of the delays related to the state processing of new drivers, are you aware of any efforts currently that, to sort of lobby the state to address that delay? And is there an opportunity for this board to?
So I think I shared with the board that I was elected to the executive council of the State Superintendents Association, so I sit on that board, and that's exactly the next step that I was going to take with the statewide superintendents to petition the governor to increase the staffing, maybe on an emergency basis as opposed to permanently, in order to move these tests through.
Thank you.
So that's where we're going with it. Dan, any other questions related to the buses?
One quick question. Is that the bus routes, are they done by a computer program?
Yep, yep. It's all entered into the computer. We actually, last spring, not only entered them into the computer, Brian, but every driver actually drove the new routes. And of course, last spring, we weren't short of drivers. And so the drivers then provided real-time feedback to the transportation director, Lisa, and she made those adjustments. So based on full staffing, they all worked, but of course, then we entered the new year and we were short of drivers.
Maybe just one comment about bus driving, and this is not a solution to the short-term problem, but there's an ongoing negotiation with the Bus Drivers Union, and one of our commitments is to make a contract that's attractive enough so that we're not in this situation.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's really a big issue for districts across the state. You know, historically, bus driving positions have been 20-hour-a-week positions. They've been part-time, part-time, part-time positions. And Oyster River is one of the few districts in the state that actually has its own bus fleet. That provided us some real advantages in relation to contracted service. The example that I use is both Portsmouth and Greenville, Green, Greenland.
Greenland.
Have the same contractor. And so when they tried to change their start time, the costs were in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, literally, not, that's not an exaggeration. Between, both systems actually were in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And when we did it, we were able, when we were fully staffed, to do it by adding one additional bus route. Now, of course, if we get into the reality of this fall, and even, we can't even fill that one additional bus route because we haven't filled the other three. So at one point, I think Sue and I were very envious of the systems that had contracted services. In this market, I think they're being much more envious of us, because in a employee-driven market, which is what we're looking at in terms of bus drivers, the fact that we offer benefits like health insurance and sick days, private contractors don't offer those. So the issue that we're focusing in on in negotiations is making sure that our pay schedule is competitive enough to attract drivers. And so when you're in an employment sector like we're seeing now, where by definition, we're in full employment across this country, the only way that you're going to get more drivers, unfortunately, is by attracting them from other organizations like First Student or other bus companies. And so that's really the focus in our negotiation, is to try to make sure that we have an attractive package that will potentially bring more drivers in faster.
Other questions? Okay.
So then, the big news tonight is the Forum on Diversity has been set for October 25th. And I am so proud to say to you that it is going to be an Oyster River-centric panel. We have a published author, we have advocates in relation to race, in relation to religion, in relation to gender, in relation to sexuality. So we've approached this from a much broader perspective. We have the NAACP represented, and our moderator is Andrew Smith, who's the New Hampshire Disproportionate Minority Contact Person Coordinator. And I, and we started the planning last week, and we'll continue the planning into next week and the week after. And I really think what we're doing for Oyster River in this particular approach is talking about discrimination on race, but also talking about discrimination related to disability, children with disabilities, children who identify differently in terms of the gender they were born to, children who have a non-traditional sexual bias, children who have basically, over time, been the exceptions instead of the rules. So why did I do this approach? Because the race issue this fall actually opened up a number of concerns raised by parents in the community around discrimination, around teasing, bullying, and so as parents came forward, they had addressed their issue at the building level, but they hadn't addressed it at the district level. And it became really apparent to me that if we were going to have a quality conversation about race, we couldn't omit these other areas. And so other than the moderator and the NAACP person, Rogers Johnson, everybody on this panel is somebody closely connected, as a parent, to our district, who has been working in these fields in their professional and advocacy lives. So taking the time to build the right panel really is, I think, going to make it a pretty amazing evening. In addition, I'll get, I'll answer a question. In addition, I've invited UNH student representatives to the panel. Now, why did I do that? Lots of conversations with Catherine and Todd and Suzanne about what this panel was about, and a concern that I had that we could put high school kids on this panel, and I think they would do a great job. But I was concerned about whether that was fair to a 15, 16, 17-year-old student be sitting on a panel like this when UNH is going through what they're going through, and they have students who have, who are of legal age, who are 20, 21, 22, who have experienced the racism that has occurred over the spring and summer and fall at the UNH, who have experienced religious bigotry related to how calendars are created. It was an amazing conversation that happened three weeks ago at UNH, and who have been advocates for gay and transgender students. So it would be safe for them to be part of this panel. But more than that, what I really wanted, and I shared with Suzanne and Todd, and she was excited by this, is I wanted those students to be invited into our social studies seminar classes, the very ones that, you know, Kenny alluded to earlier, to talk about these issues with our students. Because I believe, and Hannah, you can confirm or not confirm, but the closer somebody is to your age as a high school student, the more relevant the conversation. So I could sit there in your seminar class, and you'd say, it's nice that, you know, superintendent came, but, you know, it's like my dad. But to hear from, you know, to hear from.
My grandfather.
Oh, grandfather. Maybe great-grandfather. But, you know, to hear from students who are closer to their age about their life experiences around these very issues, I think is going to add another level of meaning to not just the forum, but bringing it to our students. So that's why I invited the UNH students. And quite frankly, Megan Esperance, who is the Black Caucus President, was an amazing speaker at UNH, and I just couldn't imagine having this forum without her being part of our school forum. And she's excited to be able to do it. And the other student that has committed is Tova Langjelz, who is the Alliance President, the Gay, Lesbian, Transgender Alliance President, and she's from Sweden. So that adds another whole element to the forum. And we had a parent who is Muslim, who's going to be part of our forum. Now, the interesting thing about the parent who's a Muslim is she's blonde and blue-eyed, and nobody would use a stereotype to predict that that was her religion. And so often, this is about stereotypes and differences. And so, long story short, I am so excited about the commitment we've got from parent advocates and from UNH students and from the NAACP and the state minority office. So really, I think it's going to be a great night. It's not going to be a chalk-and-talk kind of thing. It's going to be a presentation, brief presentation, three to five minutes. At the end of the presentation, the person who's doing the presenting will have two, maybe three, questions. The audience is going to be in the cafeteria at tables. We're not using the auditorium. We're using the cafeteria. And if four people or six people are sitting at a table, they would be talking about those two questions or three questions, and then we'll do sporadic report outs. Then the next person speaks. They'll talk about their experience, they'll have their questions, then we repeat the process through the evening. And ultimate question is, how does Oyster River become a better school system as a result of what we have experienced this fall and maybe over the years that was so under the radar that we weren't seeing it as a system? So that's the presentation in a nutshell.
Time and location.
Time will be seven o'clock in the cafeteria at the high school. We have asked Doris to do a community supper that evening, so if people, so we didn't want supper to be an issue. Families can come in, have supper, stay for the forum. So that's what we're planning on doing. Other questions? Denise?
Childcare?
Yep, we got to work on that. It's hard for us to take on the responsibility of childcare. Over the years, I have turned to UNH students, and I think we'll do that to see if we can build the childcare capacity that evening. We have reached out to PTOs in the past, and they've been helpful. So it is on our radar. I just can't, I can't commit to it right now, but our commitment is to see if we can provide it.
Yeah. Dr. Merz, could you talk about how the event will be facilitated or moderated?
Sure.
In other words, who, how?
Yep. So Andrew Smith is going to be the moderator. So I will open it, of course, to introduce Andrew, and, you know, I'll open it with, you know, very clear, succinct sentences like, racism is not something we accept in our district, and I've said that over and over again, you know. But I also will say, any kind of discrimination is not acceptable in our district, whether it's based on race, whether it's based on religion, whether it's based on gender identity, whether it's based on sexuality, and whether it's based on somebody's disability. And so I think it's important for the community to hear that, basically, we're recommitting to our mission statement. And I think the part that threw all of us off this fall was that we believed that we were this beacon of light, and I think we still are this beacon of light based on the reaction that we've taken as a school community. So Andrew will be the moderator. He's doing the diversity training, and by the way, that started today at the town office. We kicked Al out of his meeting, so he can't have a town office as his private fief anymore. For the month of October, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, Andrew is doing diversity training with our staff. I did the first session with the staff this morning. It was amazing. He did a great job. And that'll continue through the month of October, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And the month of November and December, it'll be on Fridays, because we'll be trying to wrap up the 400 employees during that time. We, as, we are doing the policy review that I committed to. We have changed our practice on how we report bullying. Alliance much closer with the policy that I'll be sharing with the policy committee. And then, as Todd does his report tonight, what you're going to find is we've completed the curriculum review on what's happening in the district. And so we have committed to really major issues as a result of not just the fall issue, but issues that came up as a result of the fall issue by other parents who came forward and shared incidences that have happened in their families.
I just want to thank everybody involved in bringing this together. I think this is really the way to respond to what has occurred and to make this an amazing learning experience and a growth experience. As Michael alluded to earlier, the issue of communication, which is something we've wrestled with for years, about getting word out, and even tonight, we had a non-meet, we had a non-meeting before the meeting, and over a quarter of the board didn't know about it. So communication is key. So I'd really encourage too, I think this event is such significant that, and I don't know what's planned, but I think to make sure that we have it in Durham's Friday Updates and the corresponding other town publications that we really alert Fosters and maybe really do a feature article on that.
We'll be blankening this starting tomorrow. I've been sitting on it until I told you first, because I really feel that my responsibility is to inform the board before I inform the world. But now that I've informed you, tomorrow, there'll be constant communication with the parents. We'll send out a school messenger, we'll use the Durham Friday Update, we'll use the Lee E. Cryer, we'll use the Medbury Newsletter. We will inform Fosters. We'll probably get some immediate feedback in relation to the diversity training that also will go to the press tomorrow. I imagine that they'll want to put Andrew on tape and put him on WMUR. I imagine all of these things, these are things that are going to happen. But this is, this is news, big news for the district.
And I think, as Michael suggested, and I think the kind of official social media site we have as a district would be important. And one other place of great value is the UNH newspaper, which comes out twice a week. To be able to put maybe a short article in that.
Never use that.
You know, we really do want to bring in.
Because you're going to have New Hampshire students.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a new one.
And I'll have another one, too. I can have Jose Calvo, he's the UNH External Affairs Representative. He's a student, and I'll pass along this date, and he can pass it on to the student senate. And on that note, I think the UNH, involving UNH students is a super-great idea. Because, I mean, often, we think of ourselves as completely separate from the university, but there's a lot of Oyster River students who go to UNH. And by incorporating both in that training, it's not just that the UNH students are helping the Oyster River students, it's that that wave of Oyster River students hopefully is instituting a lot of change that's going to happen at the university level. So I think it's a great idea.
Thanks. And I also think that it's important to inform our three towns. You know, schools and microcosms of the communities that they're in. They're not isolated from the communities. So we are impacted by what happens at UNH, but we're also impacted by what happens in Durham Lee and Medbury, and making sure that our towns are aware of this and know that they're invited. So I asked Todd, the capacity of our cafeteria is 400, you said?
450.
450 people. So is it possible we could fill our cafeteria? I think so. And I'll tell you why. When UNH did their event three weeks ago, they expected less than 60 people. Over 200 people showed up. Not all from UNH. I wasn't from UNH. There were people from all kinds of communities throughout the state. So we could end up with a fairly big event. I'm hoping that's the case, quite frankly. It certainly deserves that kind of attention. But then go back to, well, if 60 people show up, it's 60 people who took the time to be more informed about an issue. So I'm hopeful that we'll have a big crowd. We never, no, we just simply don't know.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Assistant Superintendent?
Thank you. Before I get into the report on the diversity curriculum, I did want to touch on a couple of items that have come up. First of all, you may recall in the August meeting, I told you about the homework survey that will be being done here later in October. It's, I shared it with you, you should have it in your backup from the August 16th meeting. It's really three ser- It's really three surveys. One that's going to go to the parent community, one that's going to go to teachers, and one that goes to the students. And they're similar questions, just phrased in a way that looks at it from the perspective of that role. And the idea is to take that data and cross-reference it and try to get a handle on exactly what people are experiencing. So that is coming. The other thing I wanted to mention is the survey that the Wellness Committee put together, which was reported on at the last meeting. We had our first Wellness Committee meeting Monday afternoon and have begun talking about that, looking at that data, and whether or not there are any questions we felt we missed we needed to add to make sure the next time we do it, it's more comprehensive. But again, we're, as we committed when we designed the survey last spring, we were going to do it again in the spring. So April, May would be the timeframe. We would do it again on the idea that it's roughly the same point in the year. Okay? And actually, one other thing. I did want to just mention, there's been a lot of talk about the bus schedule, and I have been working with Lisa Huppie quite a bit on transportation. One of the big changes that we put in place this past Monday, thankfully, we were able to put another bus on the road specifically geared towards Mastway. The comments that have been shared here tonight, there's no question that there have been days when some of our routes have been very late, and we know that, and we have been continuously working to redo them. This week, though, we were able to put another bus, Mastway exclusive, and it has impacted positively three routes, which is great. A total of 78 kids are now getting home earlier than they were before. As of this afternoon, Lisa Huppie said all buses completed their routes by 3:55 this afternoon, which is within the guidelines that we had for the timeframe. It is a little bit like a game of whack-a-mole, where you can fix a problem in one place and another one percolates up. But I do think getting the additional bus on the road has permanently fixed the three routes that were problematic, Bus 30, Bus 24, and a little bit on Bus 21. So just as a little bit of clarification there. Okay. You should have in your packet a giant 11-by-17 spreadsheet. Basically, what I have done is kind of gone through, asked for faculty support, and also done a survey of all of our curriculum areas. I want to start by saying, diversity as a curriculum topic, it's not like we have a diversity class. It's a theme, it's a concept that is in many areas, similar last year, you may recall when we did the sustainability curriculum. There are lots and lots of topics that are taught in lots of areas within our schools that relate to diversity, cultural awareness, tolerance, all of those things. So for me to stand up here and say to you, "This is 100% of the diversity curriculum district," I would be lying to you. So I want to be clear that this is a good, broad sampling. And what I was really trying to do is get as much as I could in the time that I had, and in particular, give you a sense of the experience of our kids going through our school system. I think the good news to kind of start from is that ideas of building community and inclusion and creating a safe and welcoming environment are throughout our curriculum, from PEP all the way through the high school. You know, as you look at our program, certainly at the elementary level, you'll see that a lot of what is happening is school-wide themes. You'll see, you know, focus on multicultural themes. I was at Mastway a couple of weeks ago. They had Up With People, where traveling, they came. It was a multicultural event. Students from all over the world were at the Mastway School. They met with kids, they had discussion groups. It was a wonderful, wonderful event. But that kind of thing is happening on a regular basis. And so as you go through classrooms at Mastway and Moheramit, you'll see teachers, you know, regularly reinforcing concepts like kindness and respect and all of those kind of ideas, conflict resolution, you know, getting along with others. There's an awful lot of work, you know, with circle time and things like that, to really make sure that everybody is aware of what the expectations are and understanding. And I also would say that there's a tremendous sense of compassion from our staff to keep their eyes open and make sure kids are supported as needed. The other area that you'll see is through what we call our encore classes. That would be music, arts, physical education. There's an awful lot of integrated work done with those departments and a lot of the themes. I mean, Carrie was just talking to you about the Only One U project that was just done over at Mastway. Really, the idea of that is, you know, promoting an understanding of self and self-esteem. So as you look across, from really, as you get into kindergarten through fourth grade, you see lots and lots of topics that come up repeatedly. They come up in literary themes, they come up in content, but most importantly, they come up in really helping to teach our youngest students how to interact with each other, how to understand. And I think, as one of the speakers said earlier, I mean, when you're dealing with children, there needs to be an understanding of developmental stages in what kids understand. So obviously, you're not diving into a deep discussion of racism with your first or second graders, but you are looking at issues of understanding differences in people and respecting all citizens and that kind of thing. So that's the elementary level. I also would point out that counseling does, in both schools, is an awful lot of counseling work that is done. Both counselors are in classrooms on a regular basis, doing lots of different themes. I've listed many of those there, you know, diversity, respect, appreciating others, stereotypes, all of those things, really trying to get across a common sense of what it means to be a Mastway student and what it means to be a Moheramit student, and understand what being a part of a community really means. So I really feel very good that, you know, educationally, we're doing a lot of really good stuff, K through 4, to kind of get kids off on the right foot. Clearly, there's always room for growth, but it's a pretty comprehensive model. That's the first page. Then you jump into the middle and high school. And obviously, as you get to the middle and high school level, it does become more content-driven. Certainly, well, actually, I'm back up a little. Both the middle and high school, they, middle school just launched its advisory program last week. And really, one of the big focuses of an advisory program is helping kids to understand who they are and get along with others, and really support them as they kind of navigate many of the challenges of middle school. Obviously, the high school has had an advisory program for many years. And really, when you get into looking at, what's the value of a program like that? It is a venue to have a lot of these conversations with kids about, you know, kindness and respect and how to get along and how to resolve conflicts, because they don't necessarily always come up conveniently in a science class or something like that. So having that opportunity to do that is really key. So at the middle school, you'll see the advisory program, and also a lot of work done by our counseling department around various themes, trying to develop, you know, anti-bullying messages, really looking at like valuing all cultures, and really, again, those concepts of, you know, appreciating each other's strengths and so forth. So you see that as sort of the broad themes. And then as you look at the grade levels, you'll see there are themes that pop up relating to culture and diversity that come up in content-specific areas. Obviously, you'll notice that social studies in particular, there's an awful lot, you know, sixth through eighth grade, a lot of focus on culture, civil rights, responsibilities. As kids get into middle school, you know, they become 11, 12, and 13-year-olds, they become much more able to cognitively understand and have some of the conversations about some real-world issues, and they begin to understand that more. And that's heavily built into our social studies curriculum in particular. You'll also see, one of the things that has been, is true in all of our buildings across the board, physical education is an incredibly important place where appreciation of differences and understanding each other and respect for strengths and weaknesses really is a big part of what they do. You know, in our elementary grades, our PE teachers spend a lot of time on mindfulness and awareness of others and those kind of concepts that really help kind of tune kids in to how their actions might impact somebody else. But as you get into middle school as well, we've talked about this many times, I mean, middle school age, it's a very impulsive age, and so taking the time to really work with them, and particularly in physical education, on how to get along, how to be a part of a team, how to resolve conflict, you know, how, those kind of things, very, very important social-emotional skills that get built on. Our health curriculum at the middle school, 5 through 8, does an awful lot with diversity. They focus a lot on social, emotional, and mental health, how to kind of, you know, look out for your own body and how to make good choices and those kind of things. So that's a big part. And in our art program, particularly when you get to the middle school, there's an awful lot of work done with looking at art through different lenses and trying to understand different cultures through the art that they produce. And so virtually every unit in art, there's some element of culture that's related there. And then, jumping down, science is also another area where many topics start to percolate up, particularly as you start to look at biology, they'll look at genetics, they look at a lot of, you know, ethical questions that come up around that. But obviously, the biological differences between people and those kind of things come up, and understanding of why people are different and to really develop that sense of appreciation. And then, again, we just this year expanded our world language program into sixth grade. So we have, you know, every sixth, seventh, and eighth grader is being exposed to either Chinese, French, or Spanish on a daily basis. And they're regularly being, you know, presented with concepts and ideas to try to get them to value that language, but also appreciate different cultures and differences that are out there. So that's the middle school. Questions? Go ahead.
Just, what does Project LEAD in sixth grade?
Jay, what's the acronym? What's LEAD the acronym for? I'm drawing a blank.
LEED, too.
It is a, it's a, it is a counseling, it involves leadership, but I don't want to make up an acronym, but basically, it is a counseling program where kids are working with, I could make up something. I could make up a name. LEAD. Where kids are working with, working in groups, and it's the idea of trying to promote team building and that kind of thing. Any other questions?
Could I just ask a more global question?
Sure.
So in terms of, boy, I mean, I think one of the things that is great about our school district is that our teachers really have the freedom to teach in the ways that suit their strengths or respond to their students. But with regard to the diversity curriculum, let's say I was a new teacher in any given grade. Could you describe how I would learn about these topics that I needed to address? Any sort of peer support mechanisms, that sort of thing?
Right. Well, first of all, we do have a new teacher mentoring program, so they're immediately hooked up with an experienced staff member to kind of help them, to point them in the right direction. There are published curricula for all areas. You know, so for example, the themes in sixth grade social studies, and those are in a document, a curriculum that they're given. Many of the themes that we're talking about are built into more the school-wide environment that's being created. At the high school, they talk a lot about 21st century learning expectations and respect and responsibility and those bigger concepts. So it's really part of a much bigger conversation than just the curriculum you're doing in your classroom. And there's ongoing conversation at all three levels, at the elementary around social, emotional learning, and what does that look like, and what are the skills we're looking to develop in kids. And at the middle and high school, they're looking at what we would call habits of learning or non-academic skills that really tie into how kids interact and get along and relate to each other in the interests of creating an environment that is conducive to learning. So that's all kind of overarching, defines the program. And then, many of the themes are either grade-level or school-wide themes that are being promoted, and a teacher would be drawn into that and participate in a bigger concept. So for example, like I was using the example of the Only One U project at Mastway, every single teacher was assigned, it was a bigger theme for the entire school, put together by a committee at the whole school level, but then kids in each class, the teacher would bring them down, and they would participate in these activities. So I presume kind of what you're looking at or wondering is, how do we make sure that these kind of experiences occur for all kids across all grade levels? And I think we really do have a pretty healthy dose of things that are structured enough that create that environment, and then guiding teachers to create that positive classroom environment.
And just a really quick follow-up, because I just thought of it as you were describing it. In terms of the diversity training that's going on now, is curriculum, is curriculum being addressed? If so, how?
No, it's not about curriculum. It's about sensitizing adults to all the different ways that discrimination can occur. I mean, the very, very obvious ones we see in, you know, very overt racial racist behavior. In New England, and in particular, New Hampshire, where the vast majority of residents are Caucasian, racism isn't putting on a cloak and burning a cross, it's not realizing that what you're saying is racist in its nature. It's being, the ability to recognize, and that's what this training's about, to be able to recognize those kinds of statements and behaviors that could be viewed as racist if you were receiving that on the end.
So, thank you, Jim. But I guess what I'm saying is, in terms of the practical, the practical nature of working through the curriculum with students, I think there's probably a correlation between, you know, how those conversations go, different sorts of responses a teacher may hear. In other words, are we sort of thinking through what we're already doing and what we're learning and how those interact?
Well, what our intention is, obviously, the training is really, it's a broad training, because you're dealing with, and we've done it intentionally this way. You have high school teachers, middle school teachers, elementary teachers, paraprofessionals, custodial staff, everybody, bus drivers, everybody in the district is involved. So the training is more of a general diversity training, but the intent is to then, from that, let's reflect on practice. And so I would envision a point in the future, once we've gotten everybody trained, where we would revisit this topic and say, okay, now that we've been, how can we refine this? What can we do to make it stronger and better? And where are the holes in this? And so hopefully, that will kind of motivate some great conversation. I think I would be remiss if I didn't point out that a lot of these conversations are already happening. We had some, you know, unfortunate events in our community that kind of brought this up in a big way. But the notion of 21st century learning expectations and habits of learning and social, emotional learning, and all of those concepts were already on the front burner, and the developing of advisory programs and looking at themes that we need to, you know, to bully-proof our schools and those kind of things, those are all ongoing ideas. So this is an awareness piece of, here's what our curriculum says it does. Okay, are there places that we need to go deeper and do more? And are there places where we see holes? And how do we fill those? And I do think at some point, we will be working, Andrew has been great in terms of working with us, and I'm sure he'll have some suggestions for us of things that we could build in, whether it's bringing in speakers to work with students or programs we could have in our school to promote those concepts. Yes?
How long is the training that all the staff, how many hours?
Three hours.
Three hours, okay.
And it's in groups of 20. So it's going to take us a while to get everybody done. So the last page is really the high school, and as you would expect, the high school is much more course-specific, content-specific, and obviously, the nature of topics that come up. And again, I do want to just back up and emphasize that this is done by doing a search for diversity, cultural diversity and tolerance, and finding topics that come up in our curriculum that way. As anybody who's sat in a sociology class, or you know there's an awful lot that goes on related to this that isn't like a particular curriculum topic that you set out to plan. In fact, a lot of times, this is, this is the kind of stuff that I would call in the category of accidental learning that happened because a conversation sort of transpired. That being said, there's a lot of places at the high school level, so if you look at, like particularly in biology at freshman level, freshman year is the one year in high school where there's an awful lot of common courses that kids take. And so themes of diversity and acceptance and those kind of things pop up in biology, world cultures, essentials of English, and in a lot of the world language classes where they're really focused on culture. So, and in physical education. I actually, this is an opportunity, at some point in the near future, we're going to invite our PE department at the high school to come in and talk, but they're doing an awful lot around diversity and so forth. So anyway, a lot of great topics here. So freshman year, there's an awful lot... So freshman year, there's an awful lot of things going on. As you would expect, as you get up in US history and Sid Ed, there's all kinds of topics related to civil rights, citizenship, you know, women's studies, all of those topics that relate to various topics of diversity. And then the other thing is, the way our English program is structured, there's all kinds of places where topics relating to it, either through literature or through debate or through myths, all kinds of topics relating to looking at culture and trying to understand that. And again, I've already mentioned this, but the advisory program at the high school, they do monthly themes where they're really trying to hammer home, you know, all kinds of ideas related to creating a safe, a healthy climate in the school. And then, as I mentioned, the 21st century learning expectations really are overarching to everything that is happening. Any other questions?
I just have a comment that, I'm not going to probably say this right, but it seems to me, when you look at diversity, it's possible to look at diversity as kind of charming. You know, it's interesting. The world is diverse and isn't this interesting?
Right.
And I think it's also possible to look at diversity as uncomfortable.
True.
And that there are people who are undergoing things that make you uncomfortable even to be in their presence. You know, like we had a teacher at UNH who, during the AIDS epidemic, she knew people were suffering with AIDS and brought those people into class and had students talk about it. There's a discomfort even to be in the presence at that time. And I think that discomfort was really good. And I think that it's, and I think that race is something we could treat as, okay, Martin Luther King, you know, Birmingham, it's in the past, it's in the South. But, I mean, you could look at like, if 1,000 people die, 10,000 people die in Sudan, I mean, you don't pay much attention to it. But if 50 people die in England, it's in the news. And isn't that racism, really? And isn't that just how we react? You know, so there's a certain, I don't know if I'm saying this right, but a certain visceral, discomforting aspect that I think has to be there. Or else it just becomes kind of a tolerance and charming and, you know, kind of strange in a very pleasant way, you know?
Right.
So that's my speech.
And I agree with you, and I think you'll find that there are many places in our curricula where our teachers do challenge some of kids' existing assumptions and push that comfort zone at a developmentally appropriate times.
Yeah, good, good.
So when I, I've thought about this, whatever, for a couple of weeks. But I mean, the standard that I'm hoping we're trying to establish, I mean, I've been wearing this mental health thing for about a year, but it's that standard, that when you recognize, I mean, we're trying to teach with the mental health thing, that you recognize signs that somebody's in trouble. And it's not just enough that you recognize the signs, you actually take action and try to help them. And I think, you know, as I've thought about, I mean, we're trying to hold ourselves to the highest standard. And the highest standard, and it's an impossible standard to have 100% of, is that when you see something like that occurring, you say something. And it's really, really difficult. There's adults who don't do this at the very highest level. So it's learning that, you know, that this is an obligation, that you should do this. It's the right thing to do regardless of race or sexuality or whatever. When you see incidents like this occurring, that you have the courage to stand up. And I think we, as a district, have to foster a support system that really encourages that, that we know that if I'm a student who stands up for somebody else who's having trouble, that we're going to support you 100%. And I think that's the standard we're looking for.
That's a great point, Al.
I think you said that one of the next steps is to review this with some outside experts? Is that part of the?
Well, we're going to be sharing it with Mr. Smith, who's been our consultant that we've been working with, as well as Mr. Rogers as well, correct?
Yeah. So the, the, the next step for this, Michael, is, you know, so we've collected all this data and we know that we're doing all these, what we think are wonderful things. But again, I'll use the math curriculum analogy. So we were doing math wonderfully five years ago, and our test scores were flat forever. And now we do it wonderfully with a different organizational structure, and our math scores at the high school have grown nearly 24%. Well, what's the difference between five years ago and today? We looked at it as an organization. We didn't look at it as a teacher-specific issue. So here, in this analysis that Todd has done, it's by content, it's by teacher, it's by school, but it still lacks the approach from a systems perspective. So, you know, it's a bit random. It clearly shows that our staff is committed to the issue. They believe in the issue, which is, which I predicted, because we have a staff who really believes in these issues. But there's no, there's no system in place to say, this is the best curriculum we could be using around this issue. Or there's no system in place that would guarantee that every single K through 4 student in the district would be taught inclusion and acceptance and respect. Yes, we could predict that most of them do, because we have the documentation that says that. But we could predict that most of our kids were being taught math five years ago, and it wasn't systemic in the way it was approached. So the next step for this is to figure out, okay, here's what we're doing. What could we be doing that would enhance this work? Because we have a lot of people working hard individually or as a school unit or as a team. But we don't have a sense yet of what's the system's expectation for the work we're doing. And so that's the bigger, the bigger issue. I think Al said it exactly right, and I think Tom did. I mean, this is, this should be uncomfortable work. We're in an uncomfortable period in our district's life. We're being challenged. Where people are saying, we're not living up to the expectations that we believe. So this is a piece of that work, but where do we take it? And that's, that's the next step. And it won't be an easy answer, because it's not a, there's not a plethora of programs that are researched based that we can turn to. Whereas in math, there was all kinds of research around best approaches. So we will turn to the NAACP. We're going to turn to the AFT. Our paras, our paras are supported by the AFT. Wonderful linkage there, started by them to us, saying, you know, Jim, we have been at the forefront of this work as a union, and we would love to support you in this effort. They came up with that in, as they approached us at the negotiations table and said, we think we can be a player in this and we think we can help you. So what do they have to offer? What does the NAACP have to offer? What does the Urban League have to offer? I mean, there's lots of organizations out there, and we need to figure out how that links systematically to the work we want to do in the district. So that, that's the long-winded answer. We have a lot of work in front of us. This is the easy work. Even though it took us the month to collect it, this is the easy part. The harder part is, what do we do with it?
Maybe one question, then we can move on. Is that all right?
I could skip it if you want to get on.
No? Go ahead.
Just, I agree so much, and I think as, these kinds of issues are embedded in curriculum, part of day-to-day life, they're very, very meaningful. And I don't know if it's feasible, and probably not, with our kind of goals of what we need to learn academically. And maybe I'm different, but when I think back to my life, kind of all the days roll into one. And there are these special days that really stand out, that were very informative to me. And to me, this kind of issue, this topic, this world we live in, is so very important that if we, just as we're doing this night that we're doing in three weeks, if there's some way we can carve time out of a routine school day and make something very special occur that's just really focused and in-depth, challenging, uncomfortable, that that might be one of those moments that really, you really take away and you move forward with, as opposed to, oh yeah, we have sociology today and we're talking about the different cultures. So it, not to say that doesn't have great value, it does. But perhaps that's something we can really augment this whole system with.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Business administrator? No? Student senate?
Yes, all right. So students are finally getting back into the swing of things and adjusting to the start time. But one problem that has arisen is parking passes. So this, the parking passes that we had this year, the seniors got first priority and they purchased 130 passes within the first week of school. And then parking, a parking pass lottery was opened up to juniors. And I believe 140 students applied for one, and there were only 210 parking spots total, including the one, the 130 that the seniors had. To this left many students without a spot. While the school tried to come up with some more initiative, giving, with some more spots, giving 10 other extra spots for temporary parking passes for special cases, this still obviously left a lot of students without a car to drive to school. So driving to school is an important thing to many students. We rely on our cars to get us to after-school jobs, home from sports and club meetings before or after school. Parents have jobs and aren't always able to drive students to their activities. And while carpooling is more environmentally friendly, it's not always reliable. And while it's able to be worked around, missing a few club meetings here and there and begging friends and parents for rides, this isn't the most beneficial way to spend your junior year, when you're typically expected to have a job. And most kids are on varsity teams and taking more advanced classes. And since grades are getting, only getting bigger for the next few years, students have been, are thinking that the school should be looking for more, a solution to the parking problem and increasing the amount of spots available at the school. And on a different note, Spirit Week was a success last week. The seniors had a great time. And during the classic run-out, which if you don't know, is when all the classes are in the gym ready for the pep rally, the whole senior class runs through a sign covering the entrance to the gym and then essentially run around in a circle screaming. However, the class of 2018 took a knee halfway through the run, surrounding a piano where Mr. Bobcat Jake Kaplan played a song. And this kind of showed off the class's unity and support of each other. And while most classes just do the same thing every year, the class of 2018 did something different and special that really showed off what, like, what we stand for. And speaking of Mr. Bobcat, the show was a huge success for the senior class. The boys all displayed very interesting talents. Did any of you guys make it to Mr. Bobcat? No? My personal favorite was done by Oliver Philbrick and Jacob Weglars, where Oliver went on a date, but Jacob was his arms. So if you can imagine some spaghetti and, yeah, it was, it was very funny. If you'd like to see a recap of Mr. Bobcat, there's a video on Mouth of the River's website and Facebook page. And as I've already mentioned, the winner was Jake Kaplan. The runner-up was Grant Hein, and third place went to Tyler McKenna. The junior class also hosted a successful fundraiser, which was the hypnotist show. And the hypnotist Steve Coppola performed hypnosis on volunteers. And overall, Spirit Week was a huge success. And along with that, if you are looking for anything to do on Friday nights, there are typically soccer games out on the new fields, which are very fun.
Question for you.
Just a question about the parking. At one time, there was excess overflow parking down at the Durham Evangelical Church. I don't know if that still exists or could be.
This year.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
This year we do have parking at the church. There are additional spaces. We've opened it up to students, and we've had two students reply.
Okay.
And I was talking to Ms. Philippona, Mr. Milliken about this. This is kind of defeats the purpose of driving to school for Oyster River students. While it's very helpful to Barrington students, I would imagine, but it's still taking a bus to get to your car, so it kind of defeats the purpose. In the long run, though, it is helpful.
Is the demand for parking permits greater this year than it has been in the past?
So I think, I don't think the demand is necessarily greater in proportion, but we just have more students.
Okay.
So I think that that's, yeah, so I think that's part of it. And I also think that there's a, we're talking about options for students. We're always looking for off-site parking. Last year, the town worked very cooperatively with us to find parking down at Old Landing. This year, the church is working with us to, for the overflow parking. So we're always looking for options for students. And I, and we will be talking to the senate about what, you know, how, if the lottery is not how they would like for us to assign spaces, then I'd really like to get their feedback and see if they have ideas about how, what process they feel we should use.
I was just going to, that's my question. Have you looked at alternatives to just a lottery?
Yes.
You know, I mean, again, whether it be grades, I mean, since we're dying for revenue, we're going to talk about budgets, just make it a free-floating auction for parking spots.
It's like UNH does.
But again, like, I mean, I think it's an interesting dialogue to think about something other than just a lottery.
Yeah, we have, and as an administrative team, we've talked about things like circumference from the school. So if you live with half a mile to the school, you know, is, or walking distance, you know, we've had conversations like that. But I think that that's, that's where we're going to go to the senate. And Hannah Jane and I were talking about that earlier, that we would like to have the senate involved in that discussion.
I know you commented that carpooling can be inconvenient. Is there an incentive for carpooling right now?
I know personally, when I have senate meetings in the morning, I pick up one of the senators, junior senators who didn't get a parking pass. But that's still five minutes out of my way, so I have to leave five minutes early and she's usually late. So it's just kind of complicated. And especially like, I have neighbors who drive to school, but we all do different things after school. So while I'm going to Dover for physical therapy, they're going to somewhere else for a doctor's appointment. It's just, it gets too complicated, which makes it hard to.
I guess, maybe more directly, is there preferential treatment for students who are committed to carpooling in the lottery process?
That would definitely.
That could be something that we could talk to the students about.
Yeah, I think that would actually be very beneficial and environmentally friendly.
It's a way of, I mean, it's kind of, from an economic perspective, putting a cost or value on the parking spaces without it being an ability to pay.
It incentivizes what you want to do anyway.
Yeah. And we're open to options. You know, we have a limited number of spaces. We can't create spaces. We have more students coming. So this is, this is going to be an ongoing dilemma for us as, as our population increases.
It's a theme of Durham parking.
Yes, it is.
It is a theme. It is a theme.
Interesting.
Absolutely.
It will become like the HOV lanes, that people are going to get these lifelike dummies and put them in the seats and pretend they're.
It reminds me of a definition of a university. A group of diverse individuals united by a common grievance about parking.
I've heard that before.
Well, thank you, Hannah Jane, for bringing that up. I was wondering if we could take, because we have like a major issue, I think, the budget goal coming up, and to take a break now and then get into that rather than wait till nine o'clock and do it in the middle of a discussion. So would that be agreeable to people?
Sure.
Okay, so five-minute break now?
I'm just laughing. Maybe I have a bad description.
Yeah.
Okay, I talked to Catherine and she's hanging around waiting because...
Speed Diversity Officer, whatever.
The affirmative action officer, and I was wondering if we could just shift it around and vote on that.
Sure. Yes.
And then move to the budget goal.
Yes.
Is that agreeable to people?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Denise? So I'll make a motion to appoint Catherine Ploury as affirmative action officer.
Moved by Denise, is her second. Seconded by Brian. Discussions or questions for her? None? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, you're appointed. You're dismissed.
There you go.
Come on, Stan.
You can stay if you like. So that moved to the, the budget goal, and I believe that this is, you know, my sense is it's time to make a decision on the budget goal. We've had it before us for about three, three meetings. So we have a draft, I don't know if we want to make a motion on the...
Yeah, I'll go ahead.
And then we can have the discussion around the, you know, around the motion.
Yeah.
Denise?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the budget goal as presented in our packet draft.
Okay, moved by Denise, is her second. Seconded by Brian. Okay, we've had a lot of information on past, past budget goals, past budgets, per pupil cost, cost of living, cost of, so had an abundance of information presented to us. I'd just like to speak to my sense of why we need to have it at this level. I think that if we would lower it to 3%, I think it would be very difficult, and maybe Dr. Morse or Sue could see whether this is reasonable, I think it'd be very difficult for us to put money away. And I think it's really important to, that we replenish the funds. So we had some bad news at the last meeting that said, you know, to, to meet our expectations for returning money to the town, we had to dip into it for $70,000 on the last, the budget that was just concluded. Is that right, Sue?
So in terms of what we're going to have to utilize to honor our...
I thought, I thought when you're looking at the completion of the budget from last year, that, that it came in a little lower.
Yes, it did.
And then we had to dip into funds by about $70,000.
Well, actually, the way it plays out, in my conversation with Department of Revenue, I learned something, that when you present a Warren article, you don't have the option of not funding it. So the funding for the $200,000 has to come out of that fund balance, has to come out of that. You don't have an option.
Okay.
Because we were gonna use some of that. We're gonna use all of that as our fund balance, the $286.
Yeah.
And then the rest of it was gonna come out of the emergency funds.
Yeah.
So now we're taking it all out of the emergency funds.
Okay.
Which isn't a bad thing.
Okay.
Because now, moving forward, I would suggest that you not fund that, and then you have that ability to fund your emergency fund, because you don't have to fund that.
Okay.
So you can figure out where you want to go when you get to tax rate-setting time.
Okay.
Does that explain it?
But it takes, it takes $70,000 out of funds that we, that were...
We're actually gonna take all of the emergency fund in order to obligate what we said when we presented our budget.
So the emergency fund has $500,000.
$500,000 in it.
And we committed to the towns, how much?
We committed to the towns $350,000.
$350,000. And we'll use the other $150,000 to offset the cost of last year's budget.
Right. So it's gonna take the entire $500,000.
So we were gonna do two and three. It still's five, but it's all gonna...
It's all coming out of that one.
Okay.
Okay, I lost my piece of paper that I, that you had to do.
Which one are you looking for?
The, the one that I said, okay, if you did 3%, how much money is that? If you did 3.25%, how much money is that? And I have so many pieces of papers, let me know. Yeah, so this is what I've asked her to do, because like the, the non-negotiables were 2.78% and then...
Thank you.
I think if you're looking at it.
Thank you. Dan needs one. I don't.
So if you go 3%, does that mean we have $91,000 is what we have? And if we go 3.25%, we have $199,272, that's what we...
So the way I did it was, based on my assumptions, now those are just assumptions, when I gave you my letter, we're at $1,196,388. That's 2.78%. If you want to stay at 3%, the difference between one, the amount you could add to your budget is $1,288,302. The difference between that and the $1,196 is, that leaves you $91,000 after those obligations are met to add to the budget. So we talked about adding to facilities, I mean, that's all you've got, buses. If you move it up to 3.25%, that gives you $199,000.
So if you put like $100,000 that's in the goal, that leaves you between what the total obligations that are non-negotiable with, $99,000.
Correct.
And this does not include the additional money we might pay for the bus drivers, right?
Correct.
Okay. And if, so if that comes into something like 85...
That's it. We're done. We have no money. Remember, we're also negotiating with the Paris.
Paris, too. So we have these, and that's not included in the, in this, right?
No, it's not.
Okay.
And Sue, these, with, with those expenditures, you know, those kind of locked-in ones there, and on the bottom, you have additional revenue.
Correct, which is what we did last year.
Okay.
So that would offset your percentage, but your percentage would still be higher.
Okay. So the dealt, so the tuition, you're projecting will get $180,000 more this coming budget from what we had last year?
In additional Barrington students, correct.
And the kindergarten is the $13900. Doesn't that go to the towns and not to us?
But it still offsets your, your bound, it still offsets your commitment.
Okay, and that's with the state...
Can you talk a little bit more about that, Sue?
Keno garden, kindergarten?
Yeah, so it goes to the towns, like Kenny said, and you say it offsets our commitment. How does it offset our commitment if it goes to the town?
Because it's part of the revenues that come into play.
Education revenue?
Education revenues.
So the town gets, each town gets a certain amount of money from the state that will increase based on the kindergarten...
Exactly, yes. It won't be proportional, so it won't be a third, a third, a third, it'll be based on the enrollment, but that's the dilemma we're always in. When we set a budget, it impacts each town differently. So the revenue will impact each town differently, but it will have an impact. It will offset that.
The other part of revenue, as I understand it, is that it's projected revenue, not actual revenue, because it's based on funds coming from...
Now, the way, the way the legislature put that out there, and I just heard this a couple weeks ago, is it was presented before Keno was even part of it, so they were going to have it and honor it and find the money. And then someone, I think after it went to Senate, after it went to the House, someone in finance said, oh, why don't we institute Keno to help fund this? So it's gonna be funded irregardless of whether it is Keno. You as a community don't have to vote in Keno to get the money. The money's going to be there and they're gonna find it. And it's an additional 1,100 per kindergarten student as of your October 1st enrollment.
So it is real money.
It is real money, yes.
But as, as this is written, it's, we're not considering that.
Well, I'm just showing you on the bottom that, because remember last year when we put our budget together, we considered additional revenues.
So we can't spend it, it goes, it just offsets?
No, we can't spend it, but when...
What do we think we get as the $180,000?
Um, $139,000 in kindergarten.
No, I meant, the only...
No, oh, because we don't, yeah, because that's not our money.
The only thing that's only coming to us is the $180,000.
$180,000, that's the additional revenue, right? Directly to us as a shared revenue, correct.
That's additional beyond the current year?
Yes.
And so would we add that to the $91,900 if we're 3% and add it to the $199,000?
If you wanted it to offset, using the same concept you used last year, when we came at, and actually, there's a revision in your folders, I don't know if you noticed it, where the percentage that last year's budget actually went up, to be fair and to compare apples to apples, it was 4.71%. And I don't know if you recall when we had those conversations, then we added revenue and then we brought it down to where 3.5.
So that additional revenue would give us the funds to deal with the negotiations...
Correct.
...that we have ongoing.
Mm-hmm. And remember, the numbers are assumptions on the top, so those could, I did hear, we're getting our health insurance rates somewhere around the 18th of October, so we'll have a, hopefully have that number.
So building a budget based on the assumption of 10%.
10%, could be higher, could be higher, but fingers crossed that it's lower.
And just to follow up to the tuition revenue, and for a while, as we increased Barrington, we didn't have the need to do much in the way of expenditures.
Correct.
We, as Barrington ratcheted up, then we began to have to add more personnel. Do we foresee, and maybe it's too early in the process, but as the number of Barrington students are gonna go up again, and it is with that tuition, do we foresee more positions that will be necessary?
Suzanne and I have been in convers, Suzanne and I have been in conversations about this, really from last spring, and we feel like we have compensated for the growth at the high school for the current year and for next year. So I, I'm not anticipating new staff requests coming from the high school. But I do want to caution you that it is possible we could get a staff request from Masway.
Right.
Now, we also think that Moheramit will have one more staff member than it needs next year, so we'll be able to transfer a staff member to Masway. But it's also possible, and, and we'll talk about this in more in-depth during our budget presentation, that we might need two additional staff members at Masway. So there's a, so one, if we have to have two, then one would be an additional staff member at the elementary level. If we only need one, then we, we feel right now that we'll be able to transfer a person from Moheramit to Masway.
Could I ask, would, would there be, I mean, we've been increasing the number for facilities each year, right?
Yes.
So wouldn't there be a facilities increase as part of the strategic plan?
Yeah, there, there is, and that's another more in-depth conversation that we'll have during budget season. We're not at the 3% yet. We're about $300,000 shy of that goal. So if we follow our practice for most of the last five years, we did take a break one year, we would add an additional $200,000 to the facilities to get it closer to our goal. But then there's a broader conversation that I want to have with the board about our facilities number as we move forward in time. And what I'm, and this gets to Michael's idea, do you do multi-year budgeting? You, you can do multi-year budgeting in very specific instances when you have a specific goal, and that goal is a new middle school, whether it's in Durham or not, is a material that the school needs to be replaced somehow, whatever that ultimately comes out to be. But if we just go blindly into the future without thinking about that middle school over the next four years, then we're going to do a one-two punch and knock out our taxpayers when we ask them for the funds to be able to support a new middle school. So the bigger discussion we have to have during budget season is the plan that Susan and I have put together to walk us toward that goal so that we don't end up doing a huge spike in taxes and throwing the three towns on their keister as they try to support a new school. And that'll be a bigger conversation. So the short answer is yes, we want to continue towards the 1.3. And then there's the bigger issue of, we also want to put ourselves in a position to be able to support a new facility without crippling the three towns.
Okay, well, my question would be, if you look at these calculations, if you could, there's nothing here for an increase in facilities right now, right?
Correct. Nothing.
But, but are, are consistent, and we, I know there's a year where we, I think when they're trying, trying, working with the track, you know, we kept it flat for a year. What would be the consequences of holding it flat for a year? Because that's kind of what this would be right now, right?
It'd be the facilities.
Facilities, yeah.
Mine.
You know, because, I mean, I think we anticipated, you know, we didn't want to get in a position where we have to keep catching up with facilities, we want to keep, kind of keep, you know, keep consistent with our plan, but that would add money to this, right?
Yep.
Okay.
The problem is we're bought, this is so much harder than the municipal budget because there we have an avenue to increase revenue to offset our expenses. And here we're trapped because you're, the vast majority of our cost is staffing, which is, unless you're gonna, I mean, unless technology or something needs, needs less staffing, it's kind of a fixed cost that we have in there. And that's chewing up essentially, if we're making a goal of 3.25%, the vast majority of our budget is already gone. And we're like messing around with the last $91,000 of...
And we're like messing around with the last $91,000 of a $42 million budget. So it's extraordinary, I mean, it's a very difficult avenue. To me, it really speaks to, I mean, going forward, it's really looking at our programs and reviewing what's effective and what's not effective, because there's not, unless we discover gold somewhere, there's not any revenue rolling in, so, and it's, if we're trying to hold ourselves to like a 3, 3.25%, there's no money there. So it's like, the only thing you can really do is, are your programs effective? The ones that are not effective, then you reallocate the money to a need area, and I think that's kind of the box that we're in right now.
Probably relatively minor, but can you remind me, Dr. Morris, when we anticipate being able to eliminate the modular at Moheramit?
I anticipate getting rid of the modular next summer.
So next summer, savings if, I mean, some maybe, but, I mean, like, we pay, we are paying for.
It costs us about $12,000 a year for that modular, and we've been paying for it for 20 years, so.
Yeah.
20 years ago, we could have added on to the building for less money than we paid for the modular over 20 years.
Yeah, okay.
But, you know, boards are making decisions at the time that are smart for that particular day. I would argue, you know, having experienced modulars, not just here, but in all the districts I've worked at, that in the end, it's penny wise, pound foolish, because, you know, in the end, they don't go away anytime soon, once you put them in place, and it's much easier to bite the bullet and face the music and add on to a building than it is to bring in modulars, in the long run.
Sue, we, this, during, initially, we're paying a $20,000 bonus, you know, severance for any, the people that, you know, retired.
All those people.
Next year, we, you know, we don't anticipate, you know, we won't, there won't be any of that. How, how does that affect?
Well, we're just running through that now and finding out, you know, we're hoping it's not the 568, and you're right, some of that will be a savings, but we're just running through those budgets now to see.
Does the 568 include?
That was the projection when we actually negotiated, and we were using the staff that we had onboard two years, two years, last year. So it, it could be very different.
Okay, and probably, less expensive, because you have more people at lower levels?
Yes.
Okay.
So just where we are administratively, Sue and I reviewed the SAU budget yesterday with Todd, today we reviewed the middle school budget, tomorrow it's the high school budget, we're starting to go through that process. Jay had zero new staff, and his staffing increase was, was nominal because of the hiring he did last year, hiring less expensive people. His increase in his staffing line was $35,000, which is pretty amazing, but then when you looked at the health insurance at 10%, that chews up a huge chunk of change, and so by the time we went through his entire budget, with, with virtually no new personnel cost, it was 3.2%. That's exactly what it came out to be today.
Mm-hmm.
And so I'm, I, you know, I anticipate, you know, that would happen again and again and again, but we haven't gone through those, those sections yet, so we're in that process now.
How much of the $43 million is raised locally?
80% of it?
Yeah, somewhere around 76, yeah.
Do you have any sense of the projection for other sources of revenue for next year?
Federal money down, which is what I said in the last meeting. Well, I mean, it's going to be Catherine's laugh, but I think the number that we have for next year is someplace in the avenue of $50,000 for Title I, and three years ago, that was 130.
65?
60,000.
65 for Title I, 46 for Title II.
So, you know, three years ago, that was 130,000.
Mm-hmm.
So we're not a district that's going to attract title funds, in fact, Moheramit used to receive title funds, they receive zero title funds now, and the only title funds we have support one and a half positions at Masway. And they used to support three positions at Masway, and three positions at Moheramit. So those positions have shifted over to local costs because those kids still have those needs.
Could I ask you, is this, in your view, is 3.25 workable?
I think 3.25 is workable. I think it's not going to come in with lots of extra money to, like, you know, if we have the $100,000 as a minimum, you know, I think we'll struggle to get there. You know, I would prefer to be looking at two, $300,000 to put into the emergency fund, so I'd be happy if we can get to $100,000 based on the budget, where we, the pieces of the tip of the iceberg of the budget we've seen so far.
Why have we chosen to set the target based on the total fund size rather than the amount that has to be raised locally from the local community through property tax?
Say that again.
So you say, put it on the 76% instead of the 100%, is that what you're saying?
Right, yeah.
Because the total operating budget is, the total operating budget isn't just the local, it isn't just the federal, it's the combined.
So from a need for spending perspective, I, I agree with that, but from the perspective of the long-term ability of the community to bear the cost of public education here, that, the part that we need to consider is the tax impact.
Absolutely, and we do every year.
We do.
So I, but I don't see that, I don't know how this ties into that at all.
And we don't usually get into that until we get further on down the budget, especially wait until tax rate is set this month, because that assessment will change, and I don't have those firm numbers, so I'd be using assumptions again, which are still two years out. So that number, we will present that, and you'll see that it impacts each town differently.
Right, and, and to Al's point, we don't have the levers of changing those things the same way that the towns do, but we do have the lever of the total amount of dollars that we need to raise from the three towns, which is not the number that we're looking at here.
So you can approach, I mean, you can approach it that way if you want, but you're going to underfund your total budget, because that 20, that additional money that we're not basing the growth on is not going to be there. So 3.5% of 76% of the total budget is going to be a much smaller number, and we already are seeing that the number we have isn't going to meet our needs.
I guess I'd like to know that upfront, though, if, if we're, if saying 3% or 3.25% on the total, on the, the total general fund is X, then is that 5% or 7% or whatever on the?
But see, Michael, the issue is, it's going to be different for every single town, so three years ago.
I understand that it's different for each town, but you can look at it as a, as a collective of all three towns together, and how much we're asking of all three towns together.
But isn't that kind of what the. The funding formula doesn't work that way. Apportionment, that's like, that's going into a different issue of apportionment, the ability of the community to pay, I mean.
We don't know that exactly, it'll be an assumption, and a real assumption now, because we haven't even gotten past the tax rate this year, which I just sent out all that paperwork, so that can drastically change.
So let me try it a different way, Michael. So say that the board said the budget is going to be 3.25% of, of the local amount on Durham, and then 3.25% on the local amount that Medbury raises, and 3.5% on the local amount that Lee raises. So if we did it that way, at the end of the, of the budget season, when we're looking at revenues, 3.25% on, say, one of those towns, any one of them, could actually turn out to be a 17% increase. So it, it, the way the funding formula works is based on property and student population. So you, you don't want to get into a situation where your, your, your impact is so massive that it, it won't work in, in the end anyway. So the way that we've been doing it is, and in this past year in particular, is we created these emergency funds during the first three years that we were working together, and then we used money from the emergency fund to push down the tax effort for the three towns. So in any given year, it's possible that one town will be hit astronomically, which happened to Medbury two years ago, and in this particular year, Medbury is going to see a fairly significant decrease, while Durham and Lee see an increase. And it all base, it's all based on number of kids in that town and the property value of that town, and over the last several years, Durham has been able to mitigate their tax increase because of all the development downtown. And they also put money aside into a tax, a TIF, right?
Mm-hmm.
And they released that. So each town has the ability, is much, a much more flexible ability to impact the taxes on their individual town, once they know what our impact is, and they do do that. I mean, each town has basically a reserve account, they don't call it that, each, what's it called, the money that you guys draw from to impact taxes?
Overlay, is it overlay?
That we don't have, so that's how it's controlled. The towns, once they know what our impact is, reach into their revenues and push down the overall impact of the town's school impact. That's something we don't, we can't do, but they can do, and they do do.
In addition to that, though, Durham's tremendous increase in assessment not only helped Durham, but it also, because of that formula, one half is based on assessment, it greatly helped Lee and Medbury because it shifted the percentage of what was demanded from each town more to.
But it helped Medbury a lot in the last couple of years, but Lee's student growth has now, you know, kind of offset it, so it's fairly complicated.
But without Durham's increased assessment.
Yeah.
Lee would have been hit even harder.
Absolutely.
Because it helped unload that, so.
So the, the apportionment of the tax burden amongst the three towns is what it is, I mean, there's, the formula's that.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't know all the variables that affect that, but that all adds up to a number. I mean, if we say 76% of this, then it's about $32 million. So if we go for a 3.25% total increase, how much does that $32 million change?
And the answer to that is, it'll change based on the, each town's value and population?
No, no, the $32 million that we're raising is up to us, is up to the school district.
But the thing is, okay, so with that, the only thing we can control, really, I mean, we have very little control over revenue, is our expenses, period.
Right.
So when I look at this, the problem is, that what you're looking at, percentages and all, it, it really, it runs across two budgets, or it runs across two entities, because you have the school, again, all we can control really is our costs. It's the municipality side where you can mitigate the costs. You have, again, going back to my levers, we, a municipality can develop, by developing, they can increase the value of their property and give relief to their taxpayers. We can't do that. So when we're trying to control the tax impact of the schools solely on, and again, all we have is like expenses.
But see, I don't, I don't, and maybe I'm not hearing you correctly, I think what Michael is saying is that we have our total budget, and we're talking, we're going to increase it by a certain percentage, but really, part of, one piece of that budget is a fixed source, that might be federal, state, whatever. There's the other part, but, and no matter what we do, if we say we want to increase by 10%, we want to increase by 1%, we're still going to get that same amount. And so Michael's saying, let's take the part that we are raising locally and to see what, because when we raise our budget, that's our delta, and Michael's saying, let's just look at it for the part that isn't fixed, what's going to be affected.
For each.
Is that, is that what you're saying?
I think so, yeah.
For each town, you're saying like.
No, no, forget, no, forget about the town.
I don't, I don't want to look at this town by town, I want to look at this as the cooperative school district.
Okay.
So, but, but I think, Michael, the answer to you is, this is the methodology we have done year after year after year, so if we really want to be comparing, and, and really what we're, we're, we're looking at is, we're looking at our communities and our communities' willingness to support school budgets. And the numeric model that we've used does it this way, so if we're changing it, it's kind of, the, the numbers are going to be apples and oranges. To me, the bigger picture is, we had a budget last year, and I look at what the voters did with the budget, and to me, that was a real affirmation that we were on the right track, that whatever the percentage we did was meaningful to the public, and when we see what our overall numbers will be, whether we're doing it with the 76% or not, we're seeing, we're going to be going in a different direction if we make it flatter, because it's not going to be sustainable, we're going to have to cut somewhere, or we can't increase our growth. So I, I hear what you're saying, and it makes sense, but I think, try, I would get beyond the number and look at really what the numbers mean to what we're providing as a school district, to our, our students, our community.
I still don't understand the numbers. So you're saying like, run the budget through the apportionment and see what the percent increase is for each town, is that what you're asking?
No, forget about the town.
No, it's just the total, the total ask of the, the total ask of the communities, right?
Right, so forget about the towns, forget about the tax rates.
Okay.
I know, that's, I'm not sure if I'm allowed to say that or not, forget about the tax rate. What is the total number of dollars?
Okay.
That we are going to raise from the property owners of Durham, Lee and Medbury?
Okay. So based on just.
Collectively, as a sum.
Just based on what you're saying, Michael, then the budget increase would go up, would be a $1,040,000.
I guess I was asking it the other way, of how much does the tax?
So. How about this is a different.
Oh, but the tax rate's different in every town.
No, no, not the tax rate, the tax dollars, the total, the total amount that we raise.
So, so.
Just multiply it by 5/4.
So this is the problem, this is the problem with this discussion. We're trying to set an artificial number.
Right.
Before we have actually run through what the requests are. And if you really wanted to make the number meaningful, we'd set the budget goal after we've seen what the requests are, because then you would know what your need, need is. Now, you go back to what Al said, is everything we do wonderful and terrific and should be funded all? I think that if we get into discussion about what we don't fund, we'll fill this room really, really fast, because, you know, going back to Kenny's point, 86% of the people who voted last year supported this budget. So if we get into a place where we're starting to talk about cutting programming and putting value to programming, and you have a district that is as successful as our district is, then what is it that you would consider less valuable than something else? Because doesn't it all come together? For example, you know, we have an extraordinary special needs program that has a budget that's higher than our high schools, the first time in my career I've ever seen that. On the other hand, we have a special needs program that's incredibly successful. So every dollar that we put in this budget, and this is something I do, that's not an exercise, but every dollar in this budget is about something we're doing with students. It's a student-driven budget. We need one-on-one Paris, we need math remediation, we need a certain number of teachers per classroom, so the conversation would be, well, what is it that we don't need? And yet, all of our success is based on the work that we've been doing for the last five years, where we have created efficiencies, we have used funds that were once used for something else, now used to fund another position. We have, you know, incredible, incredible work in energy audits, you know, we put a lot of money in the facilities to make them efficient, we invested in new buses to get better gas mileage, we brought new technology in when we had junk in the district five years ago, we, so, you know, sitting here after five years and getting the results we're now getting, where we've all worked towards this, the, the question is, really a value-added question.
Yeah.
It's, you know, what is it that doesn't contribute to our success? And that will be a hard conversation to have, because I couldn't answer that easily at this point. The first year I was here, it was pretty easy, we were overstaffed at the high school, we laid people off in the first year I was here, first budget I put together, because we didn't have any justification to have that staff. We had, we were overstaffed in the elementary schools, we let people go. So now we've right-sized our, our staffing, and that is the biggest issue we have, you're talking 80% of the budget. If you're going to make an impact on reducing the budget, you're going to make an impact on staffing. There's, it's just, you could cut all of the supplies out of this budget, and you won't end up with peanuts in order to impact the tax rate. The only way you impact, impact the tax rate is through staffing. So my thought, having said all of that, is, let us, if, if the board is uncomfortable setting a firm number on the percentage, let's see what the real cost is, and then say, holy mackerel, this is more than the 3.25, can you bring it down that far? Because that's my prediction, you know, and that's what we do every year, the board sets a goal, and administratively, we work our tails off to make that goal. So I'm, I'm front-ending your goal into their, into their request. If we didn't do it, and you wanted to see what the real cost is, it would be what the principals present, and then what you are, how, how you react to their presentations. I've already told the principals, straight out, I'm not looking for new staffing in this budget. I think the communities have staffed the high school in our special ed program over the last five years. the last five years well. I think, do I think we're overstaffed? No. I think we have the staff we need to do the job we're doing. But I think there needs to be a time when we take a breather from growth, and, you know, I've had the conversation with Suzanne, I had the conversation with Catherine. I'm not looking for new positions, guys. This isn't a time to go shopping anymore. We need to take a break. But even taking a break, like we did at the middle school, which I did today with Suzanne and Jay, it was 3.2%. You know, it was, that's what it was. And that's a real number, and it's not new staff, it's the, it's the growth in, in health insurance, and that's pretty much what's new in that, in that budget.
So I do think that the district has done a very good job of looking at what the needs are over the last several years. What I, what I haven't seen is a thoughtful discussion of where this can go in the long run. And what we expect the total ability of the community to support is, if I, and I appreciate, Kenny, the perspective that, yes, the, the budget that was presented last year got remarkable support.
I've heard of it.
At the ballot box. But also, again, using, using, I think, Kenny, your, your math, a 3.25% increase in the total fund is probably something more like a 4.25% increase in the amount of tax revenue that we have to raise locally overall. And when I look at households on fixed incomes, when I look at even the median family income in the district, it's not rising that fast. And I'm not saying that we need to level it off now, but, but I would like us to have a long-term vision for where we think we can go with the budget.
I mean, that comes back to my point that we're boxed in.
Right.
Look at the numbers. It's like, there is no room, if, if, let us suppose, if you run out for the next three years a 3.25% increase, and that's our standard bearing that we go on, if you look at those numbers, there's, there's nowhere to add, you can't add any staff to meet that. Not if we're going to do the, you know, the capital improvement stuff. I mean, there's just very little room in there to work. And so I, I agree with you, long-term, where do you go? And that really comes back to like, look, the, unless, of course, we find some incredible source of revenue that comes in, we're kind of boxed in. There's not a real room. And back to the fixed income thing, that really then become, we're the big dog to the local tax bill, and it comes, that is one of the reasons the local communities, because the towns are also having the same health insurance impacts, the same downshifting of retirement monies coming to them. It's extraordinarily difficult for them budgetarily as well. But it really comes to the local municipalities, a decision, how can you have smart development in your community? Because, you know, you're going to have to grow. If you, and there's no, I mean, you're either cutting positions, or you're going to have to grow revenue to keep up with the costs that are coming. Because, again, when you factor in the health insurance that's thrown in there, as well as the downshifting in the retirement, that's coming up above what the CIP numbers are by far. So we don't have an opportunity to say, you know what, we really, we want to opt out of that, because we want to stay at the CIP. That's part of our budget, you know? So, again, I, I come back, I think your idea is really great about a long-term, where do we go? How do we, how do we deal with those pressures to adequately adapt the school system when you're really boxed in in terms of funding?
Yeah.
I think one of the things that, if you do look at that, well, I mean, that, one of the big drivers is the teacher contract. So if you really, if you're really going to look at long-term, you're going to have to look, because I mean, that's, that's, that's the elephant in the room.
Yep.
So you'd have to look at whether, well, see, I think there's a long, I think you're talking long-term, you know?
I think in the immediate, what we need, it's something really close to this. I don't, I think we're boxed in. You know, I really think we are. I think long-term, if you're going to say, okay, we think this is unsustainable, I think, which is, Kenny, your argument, it's unsustainable to keep doing this, then you have to look at whether, how are you going to negotiate the teacher contract, and, and things like that. And that's, you know, that's, that's a couple of years down the road, but that's maybe the kind of thinking that you need to have.
Yeah. So, I mean, another way to look at this is, and what I feel is the real elephant in the room, you know, I think we get a little too preoccupied about what we have in front of us, what we're doing locally, when, you know, we have a lot of state issues that we're really talking about here, at the core of the challenges we face. You know, Michael, I agree with you, and one of the things that's always made me frankly uncomfortable is that, you know, depending on your family income, you know, that determines the quality of education you get in the state. And that's true in many places in this country, and I understand that. But, you know, many of the things that we're talking about are, you know, our state's lack of a broad-based tax, the fact that our taxation system is regressive. And it comes down to local districts having to have these difficult conversations about, you know, do, can we afford to sustain the level of quality and performance that we all want? And I think if you went around the state and asked any given community, I would be shocked if there, if there was one outlier that didn't want the highest possible performance for their local school district. The fact of the matter is that, you know, depending on the affluence of your community and, and its relationship to that tax base, you have to adjust your expectations around performance. And I think, to Kenny's point, the affirmation that our voters gave last year in that 86% approval of the budget was an affirmation of that desire to have that performance, but also behind that is that frankly, most people in this community, you know, you can talk all you want about afford, but, you know, it's just, it's just the reality of local school districts, you know? People don't live here because they can't afford to live here. We're so fortunate that we, that we can, and at any given point, our lives could change, and maybe we can't, we would have to move away. And that's something that makes me deeply uncomfortable, that lack of parity in, in educational performance. I think we just have to keep in mind that some of these factors that, that drive these discussions are, are not something we control, and they, they exist at a state and a federal level. So, you know, I'm not saying, I'm not saying, oh, well, I'm just saying, that's a reality. And perhaps part of this discussion should be, is there more we as a board, or we as individuals can do to influence changes at those levels?
And I guess we have, there are at least three different ways we can approach that. We can, we can ignore those external forces. We can challenge them, and one way to doing that is political action, another way is to make sure that that is a very visible part of our consideration and our argument about what we're, how we're going to approach our budget. I would argue that that runs the risk of us eventually hitting a wall or driving off a cliff, because we can't control those things. Or the third one would be, do we take a long-term, responsible, strategic planning approach to deal within the circumstances that we have, while also potentially addressing the taxation environment and larger-level budgeting that, that we can't control locally directly?
So, I mean, Michael, to that, and, and definitely, I don't, and I don't think any of us would say, you know, damn the torpedoes, you know, let's have a budget, but the whole tuitioning agreement with Barrington came out of really this whole sense of need, is, we saw a district, our backs were against the wall, we were forced with downsizing, being less cost-efficient, losing programming, and we thought, wait, we could save programming, we could bring in Barrington. We look at the work that we've done with technology in the schools as far as getting these buildings to run more energy-efficient, and we continue to try to address that, which is a major cost saver. But there is, there, and so we, I think we've been addressing that for years. And the other piece, though, is there is a cry-out for more programming. We, you know, the strings program. I mean, look at, people came forward and said, we, you know, why does Zoist River not have strings? And now it's a program that is, you know, bounding. You know, we're fortunate, we have the Confucius Institute that's helping our Chinese, but there's this big outcry for more in the way of, to learn language. So I, we're not creating, I don't think we're creating demand. It's not like we're saying, oh, wouldn't it be great, you know, we'll put this into the budget and put this in the community. We're being responsive to a community that is saying, we want this in your schools, we want to have this, we want your extracurriculars, we want everything that we're doing. And Jim, I think it was your first year, second year here, I remember you saying, you get what you pay for. And, and, and I think we need to be incredibly cautious, but I do think we've been addressing it, trying to address it. We're mindful of it, we're having this discussion. But I think we also have to be responsive, both to the financial needs of the community, but also what they're asking us to be providing for, for their children. So that's why I, as, as much as I, it hurts me to do it, I think it's, it's necessary, and it's what our community wants.
I have one, just quick point. I, I agree with you in terms of our strategic planning. This is kind of a central, how do we, you know, before we dealt with, operationally, it was mainly like, how do we deal with all of our, you know, unfunded CIP stuff and academically? But there is a central question going forward, like, how do we operate budgetarily under these constraints, maintain the quality of our programming when we're essentially kind of boxed in funding-wise? I think it's a, it's an interesting question, I think. You know, that is something that we, that is, I think, a discussion that we're going to have to have.
I just wonder, I, I still think this is a reasonable goal. I think it's a tight goal. I think it'd be tough to reach this. I think that to, to put a goal in front of the administration and say, see what this looks like, and then, you know, then we can begin, as opposed to saying, let's just forget it and see what comes. I think, I think we're in better shape, and I think, I think it's actually worked well when we've had a goal, just to, 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 to give to the administration, and then if this is unreasonable, if they could come in lower than this, okay, you know, we can, this is just the start, this isn't, this isn't an endpoint. But I think, but I think it's, you know, if you start looking at the have-tos, you know, and all this, you know, it, it comes pretty close to this right, right now. And so I'd say, let's go with this and see what happens. So I mean, I don't know if you folks are ready to vote on it, but I prefer to do it. And I think the, the issue of long-term, thinking long-term, you're, you're going to think about how contracts are constructed. That's a good, you know, I'm glad Michael brought it up, because that's a good question, because we don't, we usually, things come at us, you know? And you do this, and you do that, and you don't, you don't think systematically like that. And I think Michael's asking us to think systematically like that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And I think that is, you know, something we really haven't done. But for, you know, we have an immediate issue, which is, I think, you know, setting a goal or not setting a goal. And we have a motion, we have a second, so I'm wondering if people are ready to vote on this. Are we okay?
I'd like to make one suggestion, and partly this is based on my own misread or misinterpretation of the original goal. I just, I think we should clarify when we say that the overall impact that we're talking about, the general fund budget. And what, what does impact mean? Impact can mean a lot of different things. And what we, my understanding from the numbers that we're talking through here, Sue, is that we're talking about the total general fund.
Yes.
Right, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
And then I would also.
Where, where are you? I can't find it.
The bold line at the bottom.
Oh, the overall, okay.
Budget goal is the overall impact. What we're really talking about is, the budget goal is to not exceed a 3.25% increase in the general fund.
Correct. So if we read, the budget goal is to limit the overall impact of the increase to the general funds to 3.25% or less?
That would be, yeah.
Is that?
So I guess I would make that as a, as a, it would move to amend the.
I would take that as a friendly amendment, unless people have a problem with that? Because that's.
That's exactly what the intent was.
Okay. And another?
And then I, no, that's, that's, well, I guess the other one was just, we do say in the top paragraph that we have a budget that reflects the priorities of the adopted strategic plan. I think we're.
No, we're last year.
At the end of our strategic plan and writing a new one, so.
Well, it's still true for this year.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So I, I accept that as a friendly amendment.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So if you, okay, Denise?
Yep.
And then I, I just have one more comment before we vote, that, again, this is based on my, my initial interpretation of this. When you think about the additional revenue, that is an offset of essentially seven tenths of a percent against that, that we're not counting here, if I, again, if I'm reconciling the numbers correctly. So that, that, that is a big difference.
Um, seven.
The $311,000 of.
No, it's, it's only.
It's 180.
180. 180. We're not count, we're not counting the, we're not counting the 130 into.
The kindergarten money goes to towns.
Well, even the 180 isn't, where's the 180 going to go?
Well, it comes to us.
Right. But that's, but that, but whatever we spend on that is still included in the general fund. Right?
No, last year we decided that we would take new revenue and add it to the goal in order to meet our budget needs. That's why Sue said earlier that the, when you include the new revenue, the impact was, how much, Sue? Four, four and a half?
4.71.
4.71.
Yeah. So we'll need the new, we'll need the new revenue. So that still leaves, just to be clear, that it's leaving, the lion's share of the Barrington tuition money is used to offset taxes.
Right, right.
Okay. Okay, is that clear? So the, it's at the 3.10, but the, the 180 is, is used to offset, that's, you know? Okay, clear? Okay, are we ready to vote? Okay, the motion is to approve the, the budget goal as presented in this memo, okay? Others in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the motion passes. Good discussion. We have a motion to approve policies. Okay, I don't know if people are willing to approve these as a block, or whether people want to pull individual ones. So we have four, let's see, four to approve on first read and one to approve on second read, so I, I don't know. Does anybody want, want to pull through?
Is EA, EF actually for deletion?
Yeah, it's one's for deletion.
Yeah.
So that one should be handled separately.
Yep.
Yep.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the updates to KCDA, KLG, CHCA, and EBCA.
Okay, moved by Michael, is her second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Denise. Are there discussions on these, or questions? Yeah, Brian?
Just one question, because I, obviously being due to the board. Why are we, the memorials, dedications, and recognitions, which is KCDA, why did that change to the, to where it goes to the superintendent and not the school board as far as deciding on that?
I think it's the issue of what, the, the school board generally is a policymaking body, and generally when decisions are made, you push them down to the management level? And so that was the intent. The intent was to keep it at my level as opposed to your level on memorials. Sort of the same thing on handbooks, Brian, you know? Do you guys want to be doing something like that?
Well, just to get word, sometimes memorials can get a little more emotional with people, and the handbooks do.
Yep.
And, you know, some people, you know, want to make a, remember something, somebody, and sometimes might not be the right way to go about it. So I don't know.
So historically, what's happened is that's been pushed to us on a practical sense, and we work with families. So what we're trying to avoid is turning the school property into a multiple memorials over multiple losses, and then somebody doesn't get recognized, and we end up, so we, we're trying to make sure that when the memorial is, is approved, it's, it's, it's in a way that's respectful to the family, but doesn't turn into a monument, oh, I hate to say this word, but, that we don't have multiple monuments all over the property. So the, the idea of putting this policy forward was to be able to work with families respectfully, but not turn the property into, you know, a, multiple memorials.
And did I read correctly in here that we wouldn't use the school for a memorial gathering or something like that?
Yeah, that is pretty standard practice. Part of the logic behind that comes from the survivor counselor psychologists and so forth, not to use the school as a memorial service location, because it can have tremendous impact on the student body. When we have, we've had those requests before, and we've worked with the family to relocate their desire to a church, which is more, more appropriate for loss than the school. School is about celebrating learning, it's not about the loss of a student. So we'd rather keep the loss of a student in its appropriate venue and not turn the school into that, that venue.
I think the, two things, with having the superintendent, if, if we're the deciding board, it. I think the two things with having the superintendent, if we're the deciding board, in a way, it really puts people who want to have a memorial to come and make their case before the school board in a public meeting, and I think that's not fair to people in that situation, so it seems much more private, personal to be able to approach the superintendent.
I was just curious, Costa, how we got there.
Yeah, well, you know, it's just trying to avoid complications at an emotional time. So, we wanted to get this policy through when there wasn't a loss to be dealing with. We've had several losses, some really superb young people. Last year, we lost an amazing young man at the middle school. And so, you know, that particular child was embraced by the school community, by the greater community, and so forth. And two years before that, we lost a child for a whole different reason, and that child's situation would have been extremely different. And so, it's this issue of trying to make sure that when we're dealing with loss, we deal with it in a way that's respectful and equitable.
Okay. Any questions about this policy? Okay, if you have a motion, a second, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, so those four policies are approved for first read, and we have a policy for deletion, special use of school buses, and I have a motion to approve the deletion of that policy.
Just a procedural question, does the deletion also require two votes to, deletion can happen in a single?
Yeah.
Someone else.
Okay, do you have a motion? I'm sorry.
So, I'll make a motion to delete policy E, I think it's EEF.
Moved by Denise, is her second? Seconded by Brian.
It's actually for deletion.
Yeah, specialist of school buses for deletion.
Is that for deletion, or is it adoption?
For deletion.
It is for deletion.
It is for deletion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Discussion on this?
So, there's no comment about that one in the policy minutes? I'm curious.
It was, we did, we docked about it, maybe it was the meeting before, sometimes we get, I know we, we talked about that we didn't need that policy anymore.
I'm sorry?
I think Brian was second.
I think Brian was the second.
Thank you.
Wendy would have the answer for that, of why, where this came from, and why it might have been a redundant policy even. I think there is something similar to that.
So, I can just jump in, this particular policy is basically illegal now. We cannot use our school buses for anything other than moving our children, so that's the reason why we're deleting it.
That seems like a good reason.
It seems like a good reason. Okay. So, anybody would argue for your legality? So, all of us in favor of the deletion, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, that policy's deleted. Okay. Motion to approve Oyster River coaches, middle school coaches? Brian?
Motion to approve coaches, as stated.
Okay, moved by Brian, seconded by Dan. Discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. Okay, that concludes our actions. School committees, school board updates, negotiations committees met with certainly the bus drivers, we had very thorough and a very, you know, full list of things to be negotiated, so that's ongoing.
So, just so the board knows, that's not on the committee, they do have new representation, National Union, and they presented changes to virtually every single article in the contract. So, we've not had a comprehensive A to Z negotiations with any of our contracts in the last five years, so it's much more time-consuming to go through every single article. We've counter-proposed every single one of theirs, and so, the process now is they'll counter-propose direct counter-proposals, and on it goes. The ORPAS group, which is our para-professionals, they proposed ideas around four issues, all of which seemed very reasonable, and so, very much different approach, that's what typically happens in our district, whether it's teachers, or whether it's custodians, it's food service, it's generally, you know, a spot check on different articles and proposals. So, it's unusual for us to be dealing with every single article in a contract. It's timing, time-intensive, language-intensive, and, but we'll get there. I mean, the attitude on both groups, I have to say, is absolutely positive. We have, I have to say, we have great relationships with our unions, and dialogue is always open, and we continue to work through their issues, and eventually, we'll come to you with proposals that we've agreed to.
Yeah, and as a member of the committee, we get to watch your masterful attention to detail.
Yeah. Painful, painful.
No, you don't look in pain, you look very interested. And the meeting, tomorrow night, the middle school committee, the building committee will meet.
Tomorrow night, we're meeting with the superintendent's facilities committee, we'll be going over the various proposals that we've come up to date, and at the suggestion of one of the members from the last meeting, we'll just have another open discussion about to see if we, there are ideas we hadn't come up with. One that came up through email, for example, was turning this building into the middle school and building a brand-new high school. That'll only double the cost of bonding, but, you know, nobody had thought of it, so it's, you know, there it is.
Yep. Did every possibility.
And I think that a couple of the members might have some other ideas they want to put on the table to be considered.
So, other committees, committee reports? No? Okay, public comment? Okay.
No, you're all set.
Okay. Future meetings are listed. So, have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Moved by Michael, seconded by Brian, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Adjourn.